I call this meeting to order. Good evening, I am Trenae Sriggs, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM on this eighth day of August 2023. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, would you please announce those school board members in attendance? I will note that Dr. Robertson will be attending tonight's meeting as the superintendent's designate. Welcome, Dr. Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex School Board Room Auditorium is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Thank you. So, please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we will enjoy our favorite part of the evening, and that is to recognize our outstanding students and employees. Mrs. Manning.
So, our first recognition this evening is for Virginia's best school bus technician. Please welcome Don Urtehl from our Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services. As a bus technician, Mr. Urtehl's job is to ensure students are safe and on time for school and related activities by making sure transportation is available. Each year, the Virginia Association for Pupil Transportation holds the Virginia's Best School Bus Technician Skills Competition. The competition consists of a written exam and three practical tests on a bugged vehicle. During the practical test, contestants used test equipment and described the process they were following to reach the conclusion. Mr. Urtehl won this year's competition, which also qualifies him to compete in the National School Bus Technician Competition. In addition to winning the 2023 state competition, Mr. Urtehl has also finished first place twice in 2014 and 2016, with second and third place finishes in subsequent national competitions. Congratulations, Mr. Urtehl, we're very proud of you. Our next recognition this evening is for the winner of the National Guard Cup. Please welcome representatives from Princess Anne High School. Princess Anne High School recently won the National Guard Cup for VHSL academic activities. The VHSL's 22-23 National Guard Cup is presented by the Virginia Army National Guard for year-long athletic and academic success. First awarded in 1990, the cup represents 34 seasons of excellence, with six cups awarded for academic activities and athletics in each of the VHSL's six enrollment classifications. There are five academic activities involving team champions, scholastic bowl, creative writing, debate, theater, forensics, and robotics. Points are earned based on what place a school finishes in the state-level competition. The Princess Anne Scholastic Bowl team won the Class V State Championship, the debate team finished fifth, and there were several first-place winners across multiple film festival categories, resulting in Princess Anne earning more points than all the other schools in the state. This was Princess Anne's third time winning the National Guard Cup and the first since 2016. Congratulations to Princess Anne High School, we are so proud of you. This concludes the school board recognitions for this evening.
So, we're now at the adoption of the agenda. And do I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Weems, second, well, Mrs. Franklin. Is there any discussion on our agenda? See none? All those who are in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have 11 eyes, the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you. So, we're now at the superintendent's report. This is not the second monthly meeting, this is the first. So, this is the report and the recognition. The report is the first, the second meeting, but there is there, there's no superintendent's report, but Dr. Robertson, there are some recognitions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We do have some recognitions tonight we're excited about. First up is Chelsea Bax. Chelsea's currently an admin assistant at Virginia Beach Middle School, and over the past several years, she's worked at, as a library media specialist at Plazam Middle School, a teacher in Jonesboro Public Schools in Tennessee, correct? Arkansas, Arkansas, I'm sorry. And we're pleased to note that you've approved of our recommendation for her to be the next assistant principal at Lanstown Middle School. Congratulations. Let me just tell you a little story about Chelsea real quick. She had a baby on Thursday and came to meet with me on a Tuesday. I was like, you could have called in. But no, she came in. So, Chelsea, you have some guests? I know you've got one.
I brought my sister, Moncada, and then I brought my three week old.
All right, three week old, see, there you go. Congratulations. Next up, we have Taylor Lovejoy. He's currently a teacher at Great Neck Middle School. Prior to that, he was a teacher in Burlington Township in New Jersey, and we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for him to be the next assistant principal at Brandon Middle School. And Taylor, I see you've got some guests. All right, congratulations, thank you. Next up, we have Kelly Foster, currently an admin assistant at Green Run High School. Over the past several years, she's been a teacher at Lanstown Middle School and a school improvement specialist at Green Run High School, and we're pleased that you have accepted our recommendation for her to be the next assistant principal at Green Run High School. And Kelly, I know you have some guests. All right, congratulations. Next up, we've got Dr. Carrie Gant, currently an admin assistant at Ocean Lakes High School. Over the past year, she's been a teacher at Kellum High School, a teacher at Princess Anne High School, citywide Teacher of the Year for City of Virginia Beach, and we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next assistant principal at Frank W. Cox High School. Congratulations. And I know you have some guests.
Yes, thank you, I have my sister, Marla, and I'm honored to have two of my current teachers, Dr. Wong, and my current principal, Dr. Michael.
Yes, congratulations, thank you. Next up, we've got Dr. Crystal Lewis Wilkerson, currently a principal at Thalia Elementary School. Over the last several years, she's been the principal at Thalia, but prior to that, she was an assistant principal at Kimpsville Meadows and Tallwood Elementary School, and prior to that, she was a teacher in our system as well. And we are pleased that you have accepted our recommendation for her to be the next director of K-12 and gifted programs in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. Where's the captain? Is he working? Come on, captain. VBPD, one of the finest, Captain Wilkinson. Next up, we've got Dr. Melanie Hamlin, currently a principal at Windsor Woods Elementary School. Previously, she was a principal at Larkspur Middle School. Previous to that, she was Executive Director for K-12 Curriculum Instruction in Moore County, and prior to that, she was a school transformation coach. And we're pleased that you have accepted our recommendation for her to be the next Senior Executive Director of Elementary Schools and Department of School Leadership. Melanie, congratulations. And do you have any guests? Yes, congratulations. So, for all the families, we want to offer our appreciation for the giving of your spouses time to work in our schools. They spend a lot of time outside the home, and we want to make sure we tell you thank you in advance for the time we're going to borrow from you later. Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Dr. So, we're on the approval of the meeting minutes for the July 25th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting. Are there any modifications to the July 25th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the July 25th, 2023 Meeting Minutes as presented. Moved by Mrs. Brown and seconded by Mr. Callen. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 11 eyes, the motion did pass.
Thank you. So, we're now on 11 public comments until 8:00 PM tonight. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the school board agenda is for the school board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the school board meeting. Members of the public have the opportunity to provide comments during the meeting by signing up to speak from the podium. Other methods of public comment are not offered during the school board meeting. As a reminder to persons in attendance at tonight's meeting, school board meeting decorum guidelines prohibit disruption of the meeting through disruptive clapping, calling by audience members, holding up signs that interfere with audience members' ability to view the meeting or otherwise, taking action to communicate with the school board, or disrupt this meeting. Speakers are responsible for being in the school board room auditorium or online when they are called to speak. When a person, speaker's name is called, the speaker should line up in the aisle to wait for their turn at the podium so as to efficiently have speakers address the school board. Speakers lined up for their turn at the podium may take a seat near the podium to wait for their turn to speak. If a speaker is not present when called to speak, or is not online, or unable to unmute when called to speak, the school board at its sole discretion may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. The school board also invites this public to submit comments through our group email accounts, which can be found on our website. Before we move on, Mrs. Melnick wants to say something.
To the public, I recently had wrist surgery, and I'm experiencing a fair amount of swelling, which is alleviated somewhat if I walk around, and so if I have to get up, please know it's not personal, but we have a room behind us that has two very large screens, and all of this is piped into that room. So, if I have to get up and leave, I'm sorry, not personal, but I will be watching and continuing to take notes in that, in that room back there. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker will be Bethany Wilmouth, Fabrizio Solis, and Alana Spencer.
Good evening, my name is Bethany Wilmouth. I'm a rising sophomore at Salem High School, and I'm here to urge you against putting Glenn Youngkin's introduced 2023 model policies in place. I watched the last meeting on Zoom in pure horror, people who were calling my peers' night sick, people who implied that everybody like me was following some fad to feel special, and most notably, somebody who went as far to threaten a fellow speaker. But here's my question, or instead, my request, to all the speakers here who believe or condone such behavior. Try saying those remarks right to our faces instead of behind a podium. Come up to us and tell us that we're living a lie. Come up to us and tell us the rules of our own lives. Enlighten my peers' night on our own experiences, our own identities. See the damage that your words deal. When being trans or gender nonconforming is referred to as a social contagion, as if it's a disease that exists simply to ravage your children, it emphasizes the very point we've been expressing to this board for months. Hatred and disgust aimed at queer youth is not something that no longer exists. It's not something that's gone away, it's something that we can hear in the very way we are dressed. These model policies only emphasize that fact. It's becoming exceedingly clear that, to a point, these policies are seeking to protect a certain ideology rather than parents' rights. The policies allow harmful rhetoric like this to thrive by objecting to the existence and validity of trans identities separate from a child's parents, but being trans is not a contagion a parent can nurse their child out of if their teacher tells them about it in time. Being trans is not an ideology, but believing it needs curing is. These policies support that ideology and enforce it onto everyone, teachers, students, and parents' rights. You cannot hide behind the guise of parental rights of protecting the children when you're forgetting to protect every child. At the end of the day, you were assigned to this board to do what is best. You were appointed to this board to advance the educational prowess of children in Virginia Beach. You were not assigned to impose your personal opinions regarding certain minority groups onto an entire city. Whether or not you agree with that lifestyle is irrelevant, because at the end of the day, trans students will still exist, and at the end of the day, your job is to protect all students. Vote against the 2023 model policies. Thank you.
30 seconds. Our next speaker is Fabrizio Solis, Alana Spencer, and then Geneva Warren.
Good evening. My name is Fabrizio Solis, and I'm a student here in Virginia Beach, and I've been attending these meetings for a good bit of time. A lot of my peers who also attend these meetings spend so much time and energy in writing speeches and bringing us all here together, that is really so impressive. We all really shouldn't have to be here. We should be enjoying our summers. It's actually my birthday today. I should be celebrating that, but I really do have to advocate for not only my peers, but trans students in the future. Many who speak and act in favor of these policies do so because they believe they protect parents' rights. However, these policies ignore students' autonomy and attempt to govern their personal identities, which seems like an extreme oversight and invasion of privacy. Furthermore, in attempting to protect parents' rights, these policies put trans students in a very real danger, danger of being mistreated, abused, or shunned by their families. These policies give schools the power to wield this fact over our students' head, and that's unacceptable. The existence of trans students in public schools is unproblematic, and there is absolutely no reason that it should be made so difficult for them to be comfortable in their own skin. Trans students have been a part of the student body for years. Queerness is not a social contagion, and to call it that is deeply bigoted. No one chooses to be rejected by their communities or their parents. While people assume that all young people want is to feel special, what most young people actually want is a community that accepts them. These model policies do not help with that. Trans students are valuable members of our community. Whenever I come up to the stand, I make sure to state that trans students are worthy of respect. I say this not because I don't think those on the board know this, but because a lot of people don't believe it. So, they believe things like these policies are okay. Trans students deserve respect because they are people. I feel like a lot of people look at trans students not as people, but as some sort of other, that they reject from their communities. Those who claim that the 2023 model policies are fair are those who would not be affected at all by them. Those who these policies mainly address have their input ignored and pushed aside. These policies have received very little input from parents of trans students. This does not seem like a policy for parents to protect their own child, but rather a policy that allows governance of students' identities and invasion of their privacy. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Alana Spencer, Geneva Warren, and then Bradley Fish.
Good evening, board members, and alongside me and my peers are urging you against implementing Youngkin's 2023 model policies. In 2020, the General Assembly passed a law that said the school districts need to follow evidence-based practices to protect transgender students. Under new revised guidelines, Youngkin's DOE is twisting these laws to erase the existence of transgender and gender nonconforming students. The 2023 model policies do not reflect the concerns of students nor parents. School districts in Virginia that implemented the old model policies have shown a transformative effect on every LGBTQ+ student. We've heard of so many stories of students being able to be themselves and access mental health care and not have to worry about parental abuse under the old guidelines. We also heard overwhelmingly from our straight peers where that they were glad that their queer friends were in more affirming schools and not being hurt by these new regulations. The 2023 model policies do not uphold what you promised us, students, which is an environment that respects all students and upholds our right to learn in an environment safe from discrimination and harassment, but instead, these new policies will promote hate, alienation, and erasure of trans students. These guidelines will hurt all students. How can a student possibly be focused about learning biology if they're worried about being outed to unsupportive parents? How can our peers who are struggling with their mental health learn when these new guidelines will let parents deny them access to school counseling regardless of how much the student needs help or how much the student requested? How can a student get the best out of their education if their very existence is being denied? These new policies will facilitate hate, and I do mean hate. It gives excuses for people to know nothing about a person except how they identify and despise them. These new policies haven't even made its way into school yet, but we are seeing the effects just in these very meetings, where being queer has been called a fad, or an epidemic, or just plain mental illness. It's even grown as far as where a speaker has been threatened. It's imperative of you to impose these changes. Removing inclusivity and leaving students vulnerable to abuse and oppression doesn't advance anyone's interest. Students don't want to be political pawns. All we want is to attend safe and affirming schools for everyone, and to ensure that schools are created where everyone has a voice, has their basic rights supported, so that we can all work hard and thrive. Deny the 2023 model policies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Geneva Warren, Bradley Fish, and Kyleene Bond.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Geneva Warren, and I will be addressing the 2023 trans model policies. We hear you. This phrase is so often said in this endless debate about whether a human, nonetheless a human child, should have rights. We hear you. We, being the students of Virginia Beach County Public Schools, hear every comment made about this topic. We hear every snide remark made each time one of us makes a good point. We hear every claim of bigotry our opponents make against the LGBTQ+ community. We hear the disdain, but we also hear the worry. We hear the fear that allowing kids to grow on their own will tear their relationships with their parents apart, but this is far from the truth. We, the students of VBCPS, are not advocates for tearing apart families, we are quite the opposite. We are advocates for safe, accepted students. We are advocates for peace. We are advocates for happy, healthy environments where everyone can be who they want to be. These policies will strip children of the safe environments that they deserve to find in school by forcibly putting them in dangerous and sadly sometimes fatal situations. Notice how no parents of any actual trans students have come to speak in favor of any of Glenn Youngkin's policies. If you are truly focused on the well-being of trans students, you should listen to the people actually parenting them, like Matthew Cody Connor, and not the people threatening him with violence. People fear what they have yet to understand, and that's okay. But what's not okay is to ignore the facts. You can't ignore the fact that people stood right here and openly admitted to hating children because they are part of the LGBTQ+ community. You can't ignore the fact that already rocky relationships will be torn to shreds if the 2023 model policies pass. You cannot ignore the fact that children will die if these bigoted policies are affirmed, whether it be by their own hands or someone else's. Hear us. Hear our cries for our rights. Hear our pleas for our friends' rights. Do anything except fuel the misguided hatred these policies are trying to construct. School board, if you too are advocates for peace, acceptance, and basic human rights, if you truly hear us, please amend or reject the 2023 model policies and the fear-mongering they empower. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bradley Fish, Kyleene Bond, and then Miles DeLaHunt.
Good evening. Governor Youngkin's 2023 model policies are very similar to the 2022 model policies, and both suffer from a lack of understanding of logistics. One point of thought is how the 2023 model policies require staff members in schools to refer to their kids by their legal names rather than by their preferred names unless the student has parent or guardian permission. This rule also applies similarly to pronouns assigned at birth versus preferred pronouns. When looked at distantly and in the abstract, this does not appear very difficult to implement, but on the ground in actual schools, this will prove a very large and unnecessary task. If you are requiring staff members, mainly teachers, to misgender students as well as deadname them, then how will this be enforced? Many teachers I know have already told me individually that they will not deadname nor misgender their students, and for that, I applaud them for committing firstly to their students as any good teacher should do. The 2023 model policies will antagonize an already exhausted workforce and make student-teacher relations all the more strenuous as a closeted transgender student will have to figure out whether or not a teacher would out them forcibly to their entire family, a family that in many cases will not be supportive and will not do the paperwork for a student to identify by a different name. In fact, this lack of support can vary wildly, from sweeping it under the rug per se, or outright abuse. If a teacher is reported for not following the model policies, what will happen next? If the teacher is fired, that is one less teacher and one less voter for the board members who vote in favor of the policies. One less teacher means more students in cramped classrooms, and that means lower grades as teachers have to divide their time. If the teacher's pay is reduced, then that will merely exacerbate the already low pay of teachers, as well as give teachers more work for the same amount of pay. I do imagine that many teachers will follow the model policies simply to avoid punishment by administrators or being out of a job, but at the cost of putting the already disenfranchised transgender students at more risk for suicide, self-harm, and being assaulted. These ill effects of the policies are not a maybe, they will happen. Keep in mind that these students are not any different from you or I. They are people who want to have the basic respect and chances in life, just as anyone has. By voting yes to the policy, you would do the same type of damage as if you looked them in the eyes and told them that you don't support them. How many board members would do such an action in person? How many could go up to every individual and say that they don't matter? If you are unable to do that, then why should you allow the policies that will signal the same thing for each and every student? Reject the 2023 model policies to retain both the dignity of transgender students and yourselves. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kyleene Bond, Miles DeLaHunt, and then Vivian Duchette.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kyleene Bond, a rising senior at Floyd E. Kellum High School. I've returned today with the hope of sharing why we should not be using Governor Youngkin's 2023 model policies. First and foremost, I'd like to share that we've been called diseases, a plague, a social contagion, and bribed. We've been called Nazis by people who are insisting upon burning books and silencing us. We were accused of being brainwashed and brainwashing others with the growing number of queer identified people as evidence. We are no fad or agenda. With time, people have come out because they are accepted, not because it's some trend that everyone's to follow along. Beyond that, we are students, we are human beings, and we are fighting for the rights that others already have, and right now, we are honestly scared. Transgender students are directly targeted through the model policies in a way that cisgender students are not. Non-binary students are not even mentioned within the policies, which creates a separate set of problems. It is blatantly discriminatory to force teachers to contact parents only when a trans student wants to go by a different name, but not when a cis student's asked to go by a different name. Going by a different name, such as your middle name or something, as a cis student, you wouldn't go and tell them that they can't go by that because it's different, but when a trans student wants to go by something that isn't commonly associated with their first name, we now have to go and out them to their whole family. The idea of letting students express who they are and go by a preferred name or pronoun does not revoke your right as a parent, it does not strip your voice from your tax dollars, but it does give those in a non-accepting home the ability to at least feel welcomed in their school. Forcing these students to be deadnamed and misgendered in school gives these students an even smaller support group than they're already being provided with, and an even smaller hope for themselves. Nobody in this room is asking to make your cis kids be trans. We just want our trans kids to survive. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Miles DeLaHunt, Vivian Duchette, and then Grace Scunavanti.
My name is Miles. I am 16 years old, and I am a trans man. I have socially transitioned, which means people address me with my chosen name and pronouns, and that's why I can confidently say that the policies opting to out trans students to parents, deadname and misgender trans youth are dangerous. Not only do these proposed policies have multiple contradictions, they are also discriminatory, singling out trans students and putting trans students at a higher risk to be harmed. Schools should provide a safe environment for all students, and these policies do not Schools should provide a safe environment for all students, and these policies do not allow for that environment to exist. Studies show that eighty-two percent of transgender individuals have reported suicidal thoughts, with forty percent having attempted. The ones successful don't even live to give a percentage. This study also adds that trans adolescents who reported childhood abuse were most likely to report suicidal thoughts. If these policies are implemented, the numbers will skyrocket due to the fact that outing, misgendering, and mistreating trans kids will foster an unsafe environment both at school and at home. Teachers are not equipped to deal with misgendering and outing students. This goes against majority of teachers' moral codes and adds more to their workload. Not only will this damage student-teacher relationships, but it will also hurt peer relationships and parent-student relationships. How are students supposed to trust that their counselors and advisors won't put them in a dangerous situation if they say too much? How are teachers supposed to create a positive learning environment when their students don't trust them, when they have to listen to every conversation, when they have to report anything which relates to a child's name, gender, or gender expression to parents? These policies risk students being kicked out, students getting abused, students committing suicide, students getting killed, whether it's their hands or another. Hatred has no boundaries. It festers, and these policies only nurture it. Students know best if a parent can handle them being out or not, so let students make that judgment. Furthermore, if our current system is so harmful to parents, then why hasn't a single parent of a trans child come out and criticize it? The parents advocating for these new policies to be put into place don't want trans students to be accepted with open arms and warm smiles. They want to change who trans kids are and enforce hate. The policies say they will serve their students' needs. What we need is for you to listen to us and take our concerns seriously. Do not let bigotry and transphobia be the reason these policies harm our students, our staff, and faculty.
Thirty seconds. Our next speaker is Vivian Duchette, Grace Scunavinci, and then Rowan Countryman.
Good evening, members of the school board. Good evening, adults with no students in the VBCPS system. Good evening, mom. Sorry you had to drive me here again. My name is Rose Dusset, and I am a rising senior at Kellum High School. In the fun-loving spirit of the new 2023 model policies, you may refer to me for the purpose of this event as Vivian Dusset, my legal name. Now, I understand that may cause some amount of confusion. It's been made quite clear that the model policies exist purely to punish transgender individuals for being trans. However, I believe in equality. If the transgender people I know and love cannot use a chosen name, why should I be allowed to? I have publicly presented myself using my chosen name since the first day of sixth grade, when I made a snap decision at roll call in my first-period PE class that I was sick of people calling me Vivian. I corrected the teacher. She marked it on the paper, and we all moved on with our morning. Every single teacher I have ever had has had no problem at all referring to me with my chosen name. What wasn't as easy was explaining to everyone I knew why Vivian was no longer the right name. My parents didn't really get it at first, but they didn't care, so that was easy enough. My father's family accepted it with minimal questions and relative ease. My mother's family calls me Vivian to this day. My cousins seem to find it funny, calling Vivian across family reunions for no particular reason, just to watch my brow furrow. It hurts, thinking that they don't care enough about me to use the name that I have selected. My friends from when I was Vivian had trouble adapting, but quickly got the hang of it. A few still call me Viv or Vivvy out of habit. Usually, that's followed by a quick apology and all of us moving on. I can't explain to you why I prefer my chosen name, I just do. It feels like me in a way that Vivian never did. Vivian was an incredibly strange little girl who read far too many books about cats, and my chosen name represents the more mature and in-control version of that girl. The policies forcing people not unlike me into uncomfortable and unsafe situations are entirely noncompliant with Ms. Owen's nondiscrimination resolution. I was under the impression that when Ms. Owen's policy was passed, that agreement would be honored by the city. It is incredibly disheartening to have to be back in this room defending the exact same thing two months later, instead of working on my college applications or enjoying my last summer before senior year. You, the school board, have the power to fix this for students in our district, and if you don't like the roses enough to fix it for them, then you need to fix it for the next
Thirty seconds.
somewhere out there. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Grace Scunavinci, Rowan Countryman, and Kiara Butters.
Good evening, members of the school board. I'm Scout Scunavaki, a senior at Kellum High School. I've come to show you why we should not use Governor Youngkin's 2023 model policies. In today's diverse and evolving society, educational institutions play a pivotal role in shaping young minds and fostering a sense of inclusivity and respect. It is the responsibility of school boards to ensure that all students, regardless of their gender identity, feel safe, supported, and valued within the school community. Preventing outings of transgender students and eradicating discrimination against them is not just a legal obligation, but a moral imperative that promotes the well-being and success of all students. Transgender students often face unique challenges in their educational journey, including discrimination, bullying, and isolation. By actively preventing outings of transgender students, school boards can help create a safe space where these individuals feel comfortable expressing their authentic selves without fear of negative consequence. This safety net is vital for their mental and emotional well-being, which in turn has a positive impact on their academic performance. When transgender students are allowed to thrive without the fear of being outed or discriminated against, their focus shifts from survival to education. This change in mindset can lead to the improved attendance, engagement, and academic achievement. As a result, schools are more likely to see higher graduation rates, enhanced college, and career readiness, and overall positive impact in the reputation of the institution. Preventing outings and discriminations aligns with the legal and ethical responsibilities outlined in various anti-discrimination laws and guidelines. These laws protect the rights of transgender students and emphasize the importance of creating an environment free from harassment and prejudice. By adhering to these legal obligations, school boards reinforce their dedication to upholding justice and equality with the education system. In conclusion, preventing outings of transgender students and eradicating discrimination against them is not only a moral imperative, but a necessary step towards creating an inclusive and safe educational environment for all students. By implementing anti-discrimination policies, promoting a positive education outcomes, and fostering a culture of diverse inclusivity, school boards can help shape a generation of empathetic, passionate, and open-minded individuals who are ready to thrive in an ever-changing world. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Rowan Countryman, Kiara Butters, and then Emily Wright.
I am a non-binary student attending Talwood High School, and I stand before you today to address the school board's policies that discriminate against transgender students like myself. I first want to consider the perspective of our teachers and counselors. These policies have placed them in a position where they are expected to call parents and disclose the students' identities. By forcing teachers to engage in these discussions, we risk draining the teacher-student relationship as students may not be able to confide in their teachers, hindering their ability to learn. I do not go to school to feel uncomfortable and unsafe confiding in my teachers and afraid to be my authentic self. I go to school to learn and to grow. I cannot do this in an environment that is constantly making me feel like I do not matter. The policies dictate that teachers must misgender and misname trans students, enact that not only disrespects their identity, but also singles them out from their cisgender peers. This creates an environment of disengagement and discomfort where trans students are reminded daily that their identity is not valued or respected. How are schools supposed to implement this? What will schools do if this teacher calls a student by their preferred pronouns? Fire them? Discipline them for having respect and validating students' identities? Write them up for calling somebody by a different name? One of the most distressing aspects of these policies is that they required the outing of trans students to their parents if they confide in a staff member or counselor about their gender identity. This not only disregards the potential dangers of verbal, emotional, or even physical abuse that these students may face at home, but also amplifies the disparities between transgender and cisgender students. It is unfair that cisgender students can seek support and guidance for their issues without fear of being forcibly outed, while trans students are denied the same privilege. A supportive and accepting environment is crucial for the well-being of any student. Research indicates that simply being welcoming and supportive can dramatically decrease suicide rates among trans youth. Yet, these policies threaten to dismantle the supportive spaces that are so essential for the well-being. The harmful consequences include potentially contributing to homelessness, abuse, higher rates of mental health issues among queer youth, and more. As somebody who has struggled with mental health, I am serious when I tell you, if these policies pass, you are putting transgender children at higher risk for abuse. If these policies pass, you are putting transgender children at a higher risk for suicide. If these policies pass, transgender children will likely die. Rather than perpetuating transphobia and hurting kids, this school system is meant to protect. Create an environment where every student feels seen, respected, and valued, regardless of their gender identity, letting all and every student have the freedom to be themselves, to grow, to thrive, and to learn in a supportive and inclusive surroundings. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kiara Butters, then Emily Wright, then Shaylee Halacher.
Good evening, members of the school board. For most students, supportive teachers are a lifeline, and school can oftentimes be the one safe place to connect with like-minded peers and adults that buffer rejection and provide affirmation. This is especially true for LGBTQ students. Roughly thirty-four percent of LGBTQ youth reports suffering physical violence from their parents as a result of their sexual orientation and/or gender identity. It is no secret that some students don't have access to safe spaces outside of school, and it would go completely against the views of this school board to neglect the opportunity to provide all students with a learning community that accepts and takes into accountability the needs of its students and employees. Despite the fact that these policies were made with the intent to only affect transgender students, other cisgendered students with nicknames, parents, teachers, and admin, will be negatively affected by its vague nature and how hard it is to implement. I'm cisgendered. I don't have another nickname I go by. I may not be personally affected by this policy, however, I am here tonight because I am aware, we are aware, of the dangers and the stress that this will cause for my peers. Within the past few meetings, you have been given ample opportunity to hear students' opinions on Youngkin's enacted policies, but it's important that we discuss the distressing situations our teachers will be put through. Our teachers are already overworked and undervalued. Data shows that approximately ten thousand nine hundred teachers in Virginia left the workforce ahead of the 2022-23 school year. By forcing teachers to misgender and out their students, regardless of what they believe in, we are creating an extra layer of isolation from their students, which is only going to add to this number. It comes as no surprise that teachers aren't doing it for the money, and that the connection these teachers have with their students are greatly important to both the teachers and the students. The DOE completely ignored the thousands of comments left by Virginians criticizing these policies and made no effort to amend the policies in response to that criticism. You have been given the opportunity to listen to us now, so use it. I hope you understand that we are not necessarily trying to change people's minds on being LGBTQ. We are simply
Thirty seconds.
We are simply trying to create an atmosphere where students and teachers alike can present themselves as who they are and what they believe in. Everyone, regardless of who they are, deserves the right to feel safe in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Emily Wright, Shaylee Halacher, and then Savannah Newell.
Good evening. My name is Emily Wright, and I will be a junior this year at Kellum High School. Tonight, I'd like to speak on the model policies that have been announced for this upcoming school year. As many can attest to, school is difficult, high school especially. There are many reasons why, and the specifics vary from person to person, but for most, it's the social aspect. There is nothing more intimidating than a room full of teenagers who don't want to be there. So why are we making it harder for trans and non-binary students to feel safe at school? Why are we creating an environment for bullying and violence? Why are we minimizing our ability to give students a meaningful education that they can look back on? Quite frankly, it is hard to learn when you don't feel safe in your classroom. It is hard to ask for help when you know your teachers have to out you to your parents. It is hard to go to school when you know that every day will be a struggle because of how you identify. That is not a pressure that our students need. There are plenty of more important things to worry about, and we should not have to constantly question the legitimacy of the "safe space" sign at the front door. By not permitting the use of they/them pronouns in the classroom, we are effectively creating a breeding ground for bigotry and closed-mindedness. In the real world, people are different. Even if others disapprove of it, some students use different pronouns than are assigned to them at birth. That is part of life. Pretending like those people don't exist will only create problems in the future. Is it really easier to teach the next generation that the best way to deal with conflict is by sweeping it under the rug? The people in schools today will grow up to be the leaders and citizens of our country. Are we going to tell the trans and non-binary students in these schools that they are less than their pronouns? Are we going to teach them that their life is worth less than two words? Is that the message you wish to convey? Is the objective to isolate students from their community? Is the objective to raise teen suicide rates in our country? Is the objective to harm rather than heal? That is the weight that your decisions hold. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Shaylee Halacher, Savannah Newell, and then Mick Dewitt.
Hi, I'm Shaylee Harlacher, and I am fifteen, going into my sophomore year at Kellum High School. Thank you for allowing me to speak again tonight. The model policies being implemented do not benefit nor represent transgender students or the needs of teachers. It has gotten a bit monotonous showing up here to tell you this every couple of weeks, so I beg you, please listen to me and all of my fellow students in this room. I beg you to make the right decision when it comes to the model policies' treatment of transgender individuals. The more speeches I write, the more I realize how insidious these policies are. It's obvious that these policies were not intended to respect all students and were not at any point reviewed by transgender students or parents with children in the transgender community. It shows. They are inherently discriminatory. Considering the amount trans people have to go through just to change their means of address, while cis people can use nicknames, shortening their names, such as Abigail to Abby or Ben to Benjamin, trans people cannot use a name that makes them feel comfortable. It also hurts teachers. It's wasting school resources and putting teachers in a position where they have to break a student's trust and then be expected to teach as normal. It is mentally draining, but also time-consuming. I've heard so many of my teachers say, "We're going to have to fit in two lessons today because we are behind just proving how teachers are too busy teaching but are now required to do so much more." The policy also interferes with Owen's nondiscrimination resolution, which states, quote, "VBCPS is committed to eliminating all forms of unlawful discrimination and harassment in the educational environment," end quote, but then makes it blatantly required to deadname and misgender students, which is blatantly discriminatory. It also makes transgender students go through so much more than cis people do, only to be respected in a classroom environment. Also, the timing of these policies is concerning. It seems like a political ploy rather than a good-faith act. The use of trans people as a political device only shows that they truly do not have a governing body that is genuinely concerned for their well-being. Putting trans kids' health on the line for political gain is beyond disrespectful behavior. Lastly, the amount of times I've heard "being transgender is a social contagion" is frightening. The numbers are rising because people feel safe and
Thirty seconds.
accepted. These policies are pushing people back into a closet that feels like an airtight coffin, where they will suffocate in their unsafe environment, where they will struggle with dysphoria and discrimination, and only, only can they hope that something changes. You can be a breath of fresh air for so many children in this room and more. I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Savannah Newell, then Mick Dewitt, then Jacob Young.
Hi, good evening. I am the daughter of a teacher. Some of you may know how demanding being a teacher could be, your working day and night and consuming an unhealthy amount of coffee, just to keep your head above the water. When the new 2023 version of the model policies were proposed, I immediately knew that all VPCPS teachers were going to be taken advantage of. Each and every teacher, just like each and every student, has their own set of morals and beliefs. In my experience, most teachers within VPCPS are supportive of their LGBTQ students and foster strong relationships with them. These policies force teachers to go against their very own moral code and contradict their instincts as educators. And that's just on the surface level. It may be easy for one to enact a policy, but ask yourself this question: How are we going to actually implement these policies on a day-to-day basis? Are we going to fire or discipline teachers for not making phone calls to parents about our students? Are teachers now expected to listen in at all times on every student conversation just to see if a student is going by a new name? Putting this amount of pressure and stress on teachers, when the teacher's satisfaction and employment rate is at an all-time low, is not the recipe for success. Having teachers go against their own moral Having teachers go against their own morals and beliefs, along with forcing them to enforce these mandated policies without any mechanism of actually achieving their goals, will not lead to a better school system, but rather one where teachers would rather quit than work. Even if you support the sentiment of these policies, it is reckless to try and implement them in their current form. At the very least, they need to be redefined and rewritten for clarity, so that they are at least functional. And in order to have the time to do that in due diligence, we have to reject Ms. Manning's resolution to immediately implement the 2023 policies. As the school board attorney is probably going to tell you very soon, these policies pose a genuine legal liability to the VBCPS, seeing as they blatantly ignore Gavin versus Grimm and the Virginia Human Rights Act. I'm asking you to reject these policies, not just because they put students in harm's way, but because they are also impossible to implement. Make the reasonable choice. I dearly hope you put a stop to the 2023 model guidelines, but at very least, don't rush them like the resolution is asking you to. They were here for nine months trying to fight the 2022 model policies. Now, you and I both know, you don't want us here for another nine for these policies now. Have a good day.
Our next speaker is Mick Dewitt, Jacob Young, and then Jay Cool.
Good evening, members of the school board. I am Mick Dewitt, an 11th grader at Kellum High School. Time and time again, these students have come up to this podium. Time and time again, board members sit and we hope, actively listening to our concerns and our fears. Time and time again, we go back to our home environments, hoping that maybe this time will really be the one to make a difference. While these students have steadfastly shown up to every meeting, whether it be by numerous car accidents or have you, they've still shown up. Having students demand that you oppose policies which belittle and dehumanize us week after week after week, time and time again, shouldn't that send a message? A message from those who would soon be too scared to walk in halls of schools, your schools? Many of our speeches highlight the fact that these proposed policies could and would harm transgender and non-conforming students. You've heard the statistics regarding students' mental health and how being engaged in a supportive environment keeps our students safe. We've shared our own personal experiences detailing how respect, at one point or another, from our educational institution has saved our lives. This method of saving students doesn't cost a dime. It would make VBCPS a district known for compassionate respect towards its students. We're not asking that you invite us over for a Sunday brunch or Thanksgiving dinner. We don't want to flaunt our identities in your face. We don't even want anything to change. We don't need to be accepted by everyone. People have difference of opinions, but we do deserve the same respect that any other student walking down the halls always deserves. All we ask is that you keep the rules and regulations as they stand, the way they've stood for years before trans students became a pawn of the media to further divide us. Trans students have always existed and will continue to exist. Ensure that your students are given the ability and opportunity to thrive, all of your students. We all know that gray hair means, and the vast majority of us one day fear that it comes. From what I've seen, trans people don't have the opportunity to go gray. We don't have the opportunity to grow old. And personally, I would like to live until I'm old and bald and wrinkly. But by enacting policies such as these, the trans community has no opportunity of growing to be old. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Jacob Young, then Jay Cool.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Young. I am a senior, and I believe that people should be able to choose how they are referred to without fear. And because of that belief, I reject the 2023 model policies. My rejection is based on the ideas of freedom of expression, and it is my hope that by speaking here today, I can make a difference. These policies are by definition discriminatory because it restricts the rights of a certain group of people, mainly the transgender community. There is also clear hypocrisy around the policy as well. Nicknames, which are derived from longer-form names, are respected as legitimate, even though they still change the way a student is addressed. A transgender student who wishes to go by a different name should be given that right just as their cisgender counterpart. The policies make it impossible for students with unsupportive families to actually confirm their identities through paperwork. And I can't help but think that this is the point of the 2023 model policies as a whole. The effects of the policy on transgender students and others who wish to go by different names or pronouns than was assigned at their birth are clear. When your identity, one of the most precious things everyone can have is threatened, so much of what makes you you is lost. This fact is not lost on Governor Yonkin. The objective is to make it harder to be different, to be unique, to be yourself. Not everyone will be special, but most transgender students don't need to be special. They just need to feel seen, respected, and given the same chances as everyone else is given. After all, transgender students are still students first. They want to experience school by being themselves and not pretending to be something that is expected of them. The 2023 model policies are a threat to that idea, an idea that is as old as America itself. These policies are anti-American and wholly unsuited for Virginia as a whole and therefore Virginia Beach. I urge the board to reject these model policies, showing our district's commitment to freedom of expression. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jay Cool.
Good evening, board members. Contrary to my tragic typo on the Google Form, my name is Jay Cook, and I'm a senior at Ocean Lakes High School. The department supports efforts to protect and encourage respect for all students. All children in Virginia have a right to learn, free from unlawful discrimination and harassment. Each student's individual needs should be taken into consideration by their school, and Division should help develop policies to encourage schools to account for these individual needs. These are all directly stated in the model policy, Sections 1 and 2. They outline some of the basic goals of the videoe. Frankly, I find it a bit comical. Respect for all students, yet according to these policies, the decision and identity of every transgender student in Virginia is disregarded and erased unless it is on someone else's terms, as if a trans student deserves less respect and autonomy than any other. If we have a right to learn free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, then what validates addressing us by names and pronouns that are wrong, that make our chests convulse and that pain us? Is it not harassment to be called in a way that causes us often to hold back tears? Is it not discrimination that we, transgender students, will be the only ones subject to that? If each student's individual needs should be taken into account and accommodated for, then what justifies ignoring the needs of transgender students? If a trans student feels unwelcome, unsafe, or uncomfortable in a classroom where they are forced to be someone they are not? If they need someone to confide in without risk of being exposed or outed? If they feel unsafe at home, or if they feel that the only place they can find solace and express themselves happily is in our city's schools? Then what justifies denying them a name, a pronoun, a counselor, a safe space, or a home when they cannot find one anywhere else? The blatant transphobia that is woven into these policies is surrounded by claims of respect, safety, and anti-discrimination. It astounds me. These policies will hurt transgender students, erase their identities, their individuality, their autonomy as people, and send a message to the public of Virginia Beach that you do not value respect. You do not value an education free of harassment and discrimination, and you do not value the needs of students in your schools, no matter who they may be. However, if you do value those things, we ask that you reject these model policies and continue to allow all students the right to feel safe and loved in VB schools. Until then, we will continue to take time out of our summers, our personal lives, and our occupations to come here, to be certain that you will honor the rights that you've resolved to protect. Thank you.
That was our last student speaker. Our next speakers will be Diane Muscovac, Courtney Jacobs, Matthew Cody Connor.
When I was thinking about how to address you tonight about gun violence in our schools, my first thought was to use the metal detectors currently stocked, implement clear book bags and one-point-of-entry at all times. But I changed my mind, and before I move on, I would like to point out that of the first three deterrents, clear book bags and one-point-of-entry may be an easier, immediate deterrent for gun violence. Also want to mention the positive thoughts about placing security response officers in schools in the extreme-risk law. The latter two mentioned does say the school system is trying to minimize the horrific possibilities. But what would happen if we began to change the hearts of people one by one? The source of the problem is that people are angry, and some don't even know why. All they know is, is they want to take their anger out on innocent people. I have a three-year-old granddaughter, and oftentimes think of her safety in her school as well as the safety of all children attending school in this day and time. When God was taken out of our schools, guns entered. Now, all of you are aware that our country was founded on Christianity. Our forefathers had great foresight when they penned the Constitution. They realized that building a country could not happen without help of the Lord, and in the First Amendment, they made sure that the government would not establish a religion nor prohibit the expression of Christianity. Our founding fathers believed that all people were made in God's image, and because of that, we all have worth and value. What if we taught history the way it happened, not censor out what motivated our founding fathers to move into action, which was their Christian beliefs? Tonight, we recited the Pledge of Allegiance that declares we are one nation under God. This fact and many more contribute mightily to American culture. When teachers teach the Christian aspect of American culture, they're not giving Christianity unfair attention. They are giving proper balance to their students' education. They are addressing the cultural fact that Christianity is far and away the most influential force in America. A good education not only means that students can learn about Christianity, it means they can learn how Christianity had a positive impact on the world. You see, history is not only the recording of events, it's the understanding of what motivated the people behind these. Teaching students about Christianity and its positive influence on American culture is not only possible, it's legal and legitimate academic portrait of public schools. I challenge you to get to the root of the problem, begin to change people's hearts, and help our young minds to understand our founding fathers' Christian values in history class. Until next time, think about Bible truths and how hope could flourish in people's lives. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Courtney Jacobs, Matthew Cody Connor, and then Dan Chang.
Pivoting a little bit, I'm here tonight representing a group of parents of profoundly gifted, rising second-grade students impacted by the recent admission disgrace at Old Donation School. I urge the school board to carefully consider the proposed amendments to the local plan for the gifted presented tonight by Dr. Kelly. I must emphasize that these amendments were unanimously rejected by the Gifted CAC, a committee that demonstrated thoughtful and intelligent insights into how the ODS admission process should be conducted. One of the most concerning amendments can be found on page 82 of the local plan where the phrase "top applicants" is removed. This change raises doubts about the integrity of the entire admission process. It is essential to maintain the notion that a public gifted school like ODS is reserved for the most deserving and talented students. Unfortunately, the recent admission process took a disappointing turn when Dr. Kelly and Dr. Riggs introduced a lottery system and over-identified top candidates. By ratifying these amendments, it appears that the board prioritizes supporting an administrator over ensuring that top students or profoundly gifted students gain admittance to a freestanding public gifted school. Additionally, there's another troublesome amendment on page 84 which seeks to eliminate the very essence of a freestanding gifted school. The Gifted CAC was in agreement that the selection committee should carefully consider if a freestanding gifted school is a more appropriate place for a student than their local neighborhood school. Removing this language contradicts the unanimous decision of the Gifted CAC to retain it in the local plan. It is imperative that the school board seriously considers the purpose of ODS and the reasons it was established in the first place. Throughout this year's admission process, it became evident that using a consensus rating, a one-to-four rating system, and a lottery failed to protect the profoundly gifted students. The Gifted CAC recognized this flaw and proposed a differentiating system using standard rubric to assess and rank candidates rather than relying on the one-to-four consensus rating or a lottery system. The Gifted CAC emphasized that gifted students should not be subject to a lottery. For them, the amendment on page 116, which grants a school administrator unilateral authority to change the admission process without the school board approval, was unanimously rejected by the Gifted CAC. The change made by Dr. Kelly this year significantly impacted the outcome of the ODS admission cycle. Profoundly gifted students, like my son, with 99 percentile scores and outstanding grades, were unjustly denied admission, and this would not have been the case in previous years. We must not allow a lack of oversight to jeopardize the integrity of the system as we witnessed during this year's disastrous admission process, which lacked transparency, integrity, and fairness. If the amendments are ratified, the essence of having a freestanding gifted school will be lost. It will no longer serve the purpose of nurturing and challenging the top 1% to 2% of students who require advanced curriculum. While we can all agree admission process needs improvements, ratifying these amendments is not the solution. I implore the school board to reject these proposed amendments and heed the recommendations of the Gifted CAC, which has unanimously opposed them. It is perplexing why these amendments are being pushed through tonight despite unanimous objection. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor, Dan Chang, and then Paula Chang.
Thank you. At the last meeting, after I was finished speaking, I was walking back down the aisle. A lady waved a little sign at me, and it read, "A parent's rights don't end at the parking lot." And I said, "A student's rights don't end there either." At which point, her husband stood up, screaming and shouting, threatening to fight me in the parking lot. I mean, it was really just a whole lot about parking lots. But it did highlight a key difference. Some of us are here, speaking out to prevent violence against people, and others, well... As you can see, I still showed up to the next meeting, because the harm Governor Yonkin's policies will do to our most vulnerable students, children like mine, is way worse than that poor angry man can do to me in the parking lot. And I'm sure he's part of the whole Students First group, the same group that when the opportunity actually showed up to put students first and have a student advisor to the school board were adamantly against it. I mean, why should the students, the people that actually go to the schools, be able to give their input? Some even went as far to ask why they don't have a representative on the school board, like they weren't addressing a board of their elected representatives. I mean, that level of critical thinking, it'd be hilarious if they weren't so serious. And now these same Students First parental rights people that have screamed, "We don't want you to co-parent their kids," are here and have been begging you to do exactly that. Know what a parent believes and reinforce it in your classrooms. Control what their child reads and what their child is interested in. And please, please, tell them who their child is. The audacity of asking teachers to do that much of a parent's job and simultaneously bashing those teachers for co-parenting, that's a hell of a trick. Mean-spirited and bigoted, but quite a trick. Now I just wonder how many of you are foolish enough to fall for it. I hope you don't, for the sake of Virginia Beach schools and the students that attend them. I hope you're smarter than that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, Paula Chang, and then Brenda Pence.
Mrs. Riggs, why don't you resign for real? R&amp;B artist Neo received grief for stating that in our transgender culture, parents have forgotten their roles. School boards have forgotten parental roles and weakened rights through transgender policy. Doing the right thing, protecting families, and our Constitution requires a battle in this school board. From the 2023 model policies to quality education, to parental rights, to disciplined pornography, all fought by this school board majority. You use little things to fight the right things. You abuse parental trust, taking advantage of busy parents who are raising children and working hard to support their families. When you slip in policies and regulations most parents do not agree with, you create policies that Robertson and Spence implemented through regulations to decrease parental rights and weaken families. You strengthen government control over the lives of the children. How do you use little things to accomplish your goals? The governor's model policies support parental rights and protect children. Now, parents must give written permission for altered pronouns and names. Yet some here object to this parental requirement by falsely claiming that the names students want hidden from parents and used in schools are just nicknames. This is a lie, an example of a contrived little thing used to justify voting against the model policy. The same with altered gender identification. You also use the weakest link argument as well by stating children will be abused and discarded if parents find out of a child is transgender. Sadly- Sadly, some of this is true. Some parents are cruel. There are social service and legal remedies in place for this situation that triggered for child abuse. The political weakest link argument does not give you the right to diminish parental rights, wrongly labeling all parents as potential abusers. Most families are loving and respond, and will respond in a healthier way, even though there will be times of discord. All families have their issues. These little things you pretend are reasonable arguments are actually big things contrived to bring, to break the fabric of the governor's model policy. It also shows that you think important life, people in life in a child is the government. You're wrong. It's the parents. Pass Governor Youngkin's model policy, and Mrs. Riggs, resign for real.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Paula Chang, Brenda Pence, Speaker number seven, had to cancel, and then it'll be Merrill Rutledge.
First, please pass the model policies as they are written. School board membership, particularly as chair, is an honor, and members have a duty to treat the public, colleagues, staff, and students with respect and with integrity. The chair should run the meetings fairly, transparently, equally, and efficiently. These standards are routinely violated by the erratic and unprofessional manner of Chair Trenas Riggs, and it has a negative effect on our school board and it has a negative effect on our school system. For proof, just look at the last meeting on July twenty-fifth, when she led and voted politically. She snapped at colleagues, lashing out at a board member who challenged Riggs' failure to follow school board bylaws and parliamentary procedures. She expressed real disdain for the First Amendment-protected speakers who stated their preference for committee assignments. At one point, Mrs. Riggs became so irate yet again that she stated she resigned as chair of the board and from the board itself, and then stormed off, leaving the building and the property. That is why Mrs. Riggs was not present when the meeting began, though she later rudely returned, taking over as if she had not resigned. But she had, and she abandoned her position, and no pretzel explanation in a workshop can change that, Mrs. Riggs. You disgraced your colleagues, the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, the public, and worst of all, your very honored position, and you should resign for real. Next, these meetings are inefficient and long, and we all know that. Yet Thursday's Policy Review Committee, for example, has thirty-two policies for review. The last, interestingly enough, that was snuck in is Bylaw one forty-seven, or Public Comment, which I suspect may be used as a red herring to claim a need to decrease speaker times to shorten meetings. That rationale has been tried before, and as you all know, it failed. It is also a wrong rationale because we are your bosses, and we put you there, and you should listen to what we have to say. Bylaw one forty-seven has already been changed five times in three years, each time restricting the ability of the public to speak, and we all know what that is about. But I do have a few suggestions that might help. One, have the chair run the meeting concisely, and she should disallow politicization, personal opinions, and public attacks from the dais. There will be less dissent from the public if you're fair. Two, organize your policy review committee better. There are five hundred bylaws to review every five years. That's about a hundred per year over twelve months. If you lead well, there's no need for thirty-two in one meeting. Three...
Thirty seconds.
...organize and limit the length of time board members speak on the dais. There are eleven of you, and if you each speak three minutes about one thing, you wasted thirty-three minutes. Require time limits on administrative presentations, have them available ahead of time, and for goodness sakes, review them and have your questions ready. Pay attention to the presenters, and don't ask questions that they've already answered. I've seen that multiple times. And finally, Mrs. Riggs, again, resign for real. Love the shake of the head.
Our next speaker is Brenda Pence, Merrill Rutledge, and then Jacob Cruz.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Pence, a retired Virginia Beach school teacher and a concerned citizen. What more can I say? It has been quite the debate between historically sound reasoning and the current ideology infecting our Virginia Beach schools. May I ask what political ideology you are subservient to? What would cause you to irrationally support policies that permit young biological males to use biological girls' bathrooms? Fit and pit biological males against biological girls in girl sports? What would cause you to deny our logic, respect sound facts, and refuse public policies to protect children and support parental rights? I mean, you have already been presented with undeniable facts and personal testimonies by young people who have been irreversibly damaged by Governor Northam's 2021 model policies. Remember the policies you approved immediately in 2021 and with no debate. It sure looks like a political move. Is your agenda, agenda to be politically correct regardless of the impact for our young people and their families? Great minds understand the struggles driving us that are dividing us today are not born of fact and logic, but are indeed spiritual in nature. No one likes to talk about that, but the true battle before us is not against each other, but rather good against evil, light against darkness, truth against lies. In other words, this is a moral issue. If your heart did not weep with regret when you learned that Governor Northam's model policies led to young girls being raped in Virginia public schools, then you are on the wrong side of this issue. The 2020 policies failed us terribly, but you still cling to them, as evident through the approval of the recent resolution. The new 2023 model policies are not based on some current political ideology. They are founded in reality and in truth. The policy is clean, it's equitable, and it recognizes parental rights and oversight while accommodating all students' needs. Therefore, there is no other moral option than for the board to vote unanimously...
Thirty seconds.
...to approve the 2023 model policies for all students, all schools in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Merrill Rutledge, Jacob Cruz, and then Emily Labarre. Jacob Cruz?
Good evening, board members. Back again, a little bit different attire this time, actually, has to do with what I want to talk to you about. So one day, my friends and I were all gathered. My friend Nick, who I've talked about a few times, actually, had on this really cool, like, painted denim jacket with a sort of galaxy design on the back of it. And that sort of got me thinking about this jacket right here, what was then just a plain black canvas jacket. So I grabbed it from my closet to show him, and he was immediately like a kid in a candy store. He was so excited at the prospect of painting this jacket that he took it home that night and started working on it as a birthday present for me. Then about a month later, on my eighteenth birthday, this newly painted jacket was unveiled to me. And let me, let me show you. It's like the coolest thing I own, no doubt. I love it so much, like, so much work poured into that, right? Like, that's, that's amazing. But even better is the kindness and generosity behind it, you know, the personality in there, like, him putting himself into this. But here's the most special jacket of this, or detail of this jacket that I own. On one of these pockets here, let me find it, there's a little flower emblem in the colors of the trans flag. It might be a little hard to see that up there, but that's a symbol that he added, basically trying to show appreciation for the work that I'd done to defend Nick's community. Nick is a trans person, but I think too many of us hear the word "trans" and then forget the word, the person that comes right after it. And I'm starting to feel that this board, which I previously thought was listening very intently to us, is starting to go numb to the queer community and VBCPS, and that is terrifying to me. I mean, half of you, at times, can't even get your heads up to look at some of these speakers. In advocacy meetings with board members, I'm astonished by how cavalierly you speak about the potential degradation of the well-being and lives of so many students, as if that's just the way that things have to be. Well, let me tell you, with all the meetings that I've attended, I've not gone numb yet. None of us have, and none of us accept that our friends' suffering is inevitable. When will you stop? I've heard that question asked a lot of times by now by students, parents, pretty much everyone. Let me make it crystal clear: We will stop when you do enough to support our community. Those are the only terms of surrender. We have too much to lose. There are too many people that we love on the line for us to be stopped. If we have to wait till 2:00 AM, if we have to keep coming for another nine months, if we have to reorganize ourselves because of the glass of 2023 departing to college, then so be it. There isn't...
Thirty seconds.
...there isn't an obstacle that can stop us because there isn't an obstacle greater than our love for our friends. So I'm begging this board to have some of that same resiliency and empathy, to not go numb to us. I know we fought this battle for a long time, and we've kept you up late many nights, but please don't forget about the Knicks of the world and their painted jackets. And for all the students, never quit and never forget what you're fighting for. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Labarre, then Natalie Gonzalez, then Icarus Landacker.
My name is Emily Labarre, and I'm a recent graduate of First Colonial High School. When trying to write the speech, I found that I instead wrote a list of questions. In section G two and G five of the 2023 model policies, alternative bathroom facilities are required, including single-user bathrooms. My question for the board is, in schools that do not currently have these facilities, where is the money for this construction coming from? How much are these policies, in dollars, worth to you? These policies expect teachers to believe students. Are teachers going to be expected to listen into students' conversations to determine if there's a possible name or pronoun change? Are teachers expected to investigate the students' discussions in the hallways to determine if there is, in fact, anything to report? Where is the line? How will these teachers or other staff members be punished if they fail accidentally or purposefully to follow these policies to the letter? How much are these policies, in staff, worth to you? Myself and my peers have spoken for months about the toll don't-be-trans policies will take on your student body. We've been here since September of 2022, and in return for our efforts, we are left with the same looming threat from many months ago. In return, we have a proposed resolution to expedite these effects the policies will have. In return, we are called a social contagion or damaged. Do you think we feel safe here? Two weeks ago, a man in the audience screamed threats towards a speaker who spoke against the 2023 model policies. Do you think we all feel safe here? We come to these meetings and will continue to come to them because our fear of the threat posed to ourselves and our peers by the 2023 model policies is greater than the fear of threats made against us by audience members. These policies do not exist in a void. There are real people, real lives, that will be affected. How much are these policies, in lives, worth to you? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalie Gonzalez, Icarus Landacker, and then Willow Bobowitz.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Gonzalez, and I'm a recent graduate of Calum High School. As I was reviewing the 2023 model policies, I decided to try looking at it from a practical perspective. While the potential harm these policies will have on trans students is undeniable, I was confused on how the policies would realistically be implemented in our schools. I had a few questions that I hope can be answered, whether it be by this board or the governor. Who would be responsible for informing parents about their child's identity? What would the process be for informing parents? Would it be a phone call home, or would it have to go through administration? How would it be enforced? Would teachers be punished if they became aware of a student's status but refused to report it to their parents? How would a teacher's knowledge of a student's identity be successfully proven in the event a teacher is disciplined for withholding information from the student's parents? If teachers are not punished for withholding a student's identity from their parents, then how will these policies be enforced? What role do counselors play in this? Counselors are morally and ethically obligated to keep certain information confidential if a student is at immediate risk of abuse or neglect from their parents. Would a teacher or counselor that knows a student would be abused if their identity was revealed to their parents be ethically obligated to withhold that information from them? If counselors are expected to reveal a student's gender identity to their parents regardless of potential abuse or neglect, would schools be held responsible for any harm that befalls a student as a result? Is it fair to put counselors in that position? Would teachers be required to report suspicions that a student might be trans to their parents, or do they need explicit proof that a student is attempting to transition socially? Teachers and staff may be required to call someone by their legal name and pronouns, but that expectation does not extend to classmates and peers. Would that be something a teacher would have to take note of and report to parents as well? How would a student's gender identity be documented? When I was in high school, at the start of the year, a few of my teachers would have us fill out a Google form where we wrote down our preferred names, pronouns, and whether they could refer to us as such when communicating with our parents. Would this policy prevent teachers from doing this? Would it ask that teachers report students' answers? Some students have the same teacher multiple years in a row. Would teachers who became aware of a student's identity during a previous year and are aware that they do not want their parents to know be required to reveal it to their parents now that the policies have changed? These are a lot of questions, and I think that figuring out how to properly implement these policies seems like much more trouble than it's worth. All it will do is make it so the teachers that don't follow the policies are trustworthy and safe, and those who do aren't. I think it's evident through the incredibly polarized stances people have regarding these policies that they're divisive, and if these policies are implemented, that divisiveness will only extend to the classroom.
Thirty seconds.
If there was ever a reason to vote against these policies, it'd be the simple fact that putting them in place and enforcing them sounds like an unmanageable undertaking both for students and for teachers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Icarus Landacker, Willow Bobowitz, and then Homer Stinson.
Good evening. My name is Icarus Landacker, a recent graduate of the IB program at Princessiana High School. Tonight, I have come to continue opposing the model 2023 policies, but also to pose a simple question to the board and audience alike. Why do we hate? Last meeting, we saw an unmistakable act of hate as one audience member physically threatened another, but even before that, my group has been called Nazis, Communists, Sex Traffickers and a Contagious Disease. We have had our own parents doxxed online, a local business owner threatened, and yet some of you have the audacity to speak of division and hate as if we are the seeds from which it grows, but we are not. We are too afraid and too tired to waste our energy on hate, especially when we have it thrown at us every day, whether it's through social media or the parents who whisper behind our backs at these meetings, and yes, we hear it. We hear every word of it. We have said we do not feel listened to, not just because others disagree with us, but because we come up here sharing stories and statistics of why these policies are harmful, only for others to come up here and outright deny the facts, despite some of us having lived through the experiences of bullying, depression, outing, and suicide. So yes, we feel ignored. Who wouldn't feel ignored if they laid their secrets and identity on the line only to be called a contagion? The world is too full of hate, so why contribute to its growth in our division through these policies? We should not be having arguments but intellectual discussions that are open to questions and differences. We should not be banning pronouns or names, but instead asking questions like, "What pronouns make you comfortable?" Some board members say they are afraid of driving a wedge between students and parents, but that will happen if you pass these policies. A student must come out on their own terms. I was given time before coming out to my parents, and although it was difficult, it would have been worse if I was not the one who approached them, a sentiment shared with a previous teacher of mine who experienced something similar with her daughter. If a student is brought out of the closet against their will, it could cause irreparable damage because that kind of information is private and it is not a teacher's job to play tattletale. You say you are afraid of parents' rights being stripped away, but if you think calling a student by their preferred name is threatening, then you are thinking of parental control, not rights. Parents, if you are more afraid of your children keeping secrets than suffering or potentially dying, then you are not thinking of your child. School board members, if this hate you have seen has not convinced you of the harm transgender students face and will face under these policies, then you are not looking out for the students but yourselves. There will always be differences, so I ask the audience here tonight to come to these meetings with an open mind. Do not immediately dismiss what others say because of their ideology or their beliefs, and be open to researching outside of these meetings. Base your discussions on knowledge, not hate, because that is how we make our division better for our students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Willow Bobowitz, Homer Stinson, and then Noah Moreland.
My name is Willow Bobowitz, and I'm a recent graduate of Calum High School. It is not uncommon to hear people describe transgender people as just a recent social movement, nothing more than a new trend. This attempt to describe it as a 21st century fad that tricks our current youth, however, is ignorant of the long-lasting history transgender people have had. In 1943, 29-year-old transgender Robert Allen was officially recognized as a man by the Ministry of Labor and National Services in the UK. While he was one of the first people legally allowed to change their sex, he was far from the first record of a trans individual in England. Hundreds of years prior, in 1656, the term "trans feminine" was defined in an English dictionary as a turn from woman to man or from one sex to another. Galli priests of ancient Greece would wear feminine clothing and refer to themselves as women. The history of transgender people isn't limited... themselves as women. The history of transgender people isn't limited to any country or continent either. In 1975, the Gender Dysphoria Clinic opened in Melbourne, Australia. The South Asian Hesra has been recognized as a third sex since before the 1500s. Throughout Mexico, records of transgender gender roles have been found amongst Aztec and Mayan tribes. Transgender people are not a new concept. They are not a new trend, fad, or ideology. They are a longstanding, widespread, diverse group that has had to face oppression for a long time. British colonialism criminalized the Hesra, and Spanish colonizers discriminated against Indigenous that didn't follow Spain's gender traditions. Over the last few decades, however, transgender people and the LGBT community as a whole have garnered far more acceptance and equality. The reason that the numbers of queer and transgender people keep going up isn't that kids are being swept into an ideological trend, it's that these people have always been here, are finally being given a safer environment in which they can come out in. Transgender students do not deserve to be treated any differently. They should be allowed the chance to flourish in an accepting environment rather than have the school system turn their back on them. Teachers and classmates are willing to accept them. Policy is the only thing standing in the way. In hope of protecting a better future for my transgender classmates, I ask that you do not believe in hateful rhetoric against transgender demographic. I ask that you choose to protect a longstanding group of people who have faced centuries of discrimination and oppression. I ask that you reject Yonkin's policies on transgender students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Homer Stinson, Noah Moreland, and then Carolyn Ramsey.
Good evening. I urge the school board to abide by Policy 5-7 and implement the 2023 model policies. Contrary to the partisan misinformation and fear-mongering that we've heard tonight, Governor Yonkin's 2023 model policies protect the rights of all parents, regardless of their sexual orientation. Those rights include knowing and weighing in on matters pertaining to their children's potential mental health issues, including gender dysphoria. In the past, we've heard from parents of transgender students who have exercised their right to weigh in on their child's sexual identity. They did so with the full support of the Virginia Beach school system. That's good for them. But now, now it's time to ensure that all parents enjoy the exact same rights with the exact same level of support from the Virginia Beach schools. It should also be noted that at the previous school board meetings, at least the ones I attended, only school students who opposed parental rights were permitted to speak first. This clever ploy filibustered the stakeholders in Virginia Beach school, people like working parents and taxpayers, by making it difficult for them to present their opinions while the opposing students and the media were present. Now, to those who are truly concerned about students suffering from gender dysphoria, I invite you to check out the website sexregret.com. It's put forth by Walt Hayer. He's an 80-year-old man who went through the transition to female, lived that life for 10 years before coming back. In addition, you can go onto Rumble or YouTube and watch The Offensive Tranny. It features a 20-something trans man named Marcus who has a lot of information that is not put forth by those trans activists out there. Also, look for Chloe Cole. Hear her story in her own words about how she came about to have a double mastectomy at the age of 15, a decision that she later came to regret. Do this, and you'll understand why loving parents fear that their school might secretly mislead their children into sexual conversion therapy and its lifelong irreversible effects. No child should be persuaded to trade a healthy body for a handful of magic puberty blockers or hormones. In closing, I strongly urge the school board to abide by Policy 5-7 and implement the 2023
Thirty seconds.
policies. It's the right thing to do for all parents, regardless of sexual indoctrination and orientation, and those who love their children, regardless of their sexual orientation. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Noah Moreland, Carolyn Ramsey, and then Sylvia Ruffton.
Every time you make a choice, you're turning to the central part of you, the part of you that chooses, into something a little different than it was before, and taking your life as a whole with all your innumerable choices, all your lifelong, you're slowly turning this central thing into a heavenly creature or a hellish creature, either into a creature that is in harmony with God and with other creatures and with itself, or else into one that is in a state of war and hatred with God and with its fellow creatures and with itself. To be the one kind of creature is heaven. That is, it is joy and peace and knowledge and power. To be the other means madness, horror, idiocy, rage, impotence, and eternal loneliness. Each of us, at each moment, is progressing to the one state or the other. And these choices we make as a collective also leans our society, our culture, our children towards one state or the other, and it is ever clearer to me which direction your choices have leaned us towards. Actions have consequences. It's a lesson that has taken me some time to learn, but it appears as if many members of the school board and our superintendent have yet to learn this lesson. Policy 5-7 states the superintendent is directed to develop regulation practices and trainings related to the compliance with the Code of Virginia and the Virginia Department of Education Model Policies for Treatment of Transgender Students in Public Elementary and Secondary Schools. And while I almost certainly know the original tint behind this policy, your choice in this has come with consequences, and the bill always comes due. The new model policies have been updated and express a fair, level playing field for all students in the way they are treated and the rights of parents over their kids respected, one based in fact reality and with their best interests in mind. So I ask you to take action, show us you still have even the slightest bit of integrity, that you respect the rules that you helped implement, not only when they benefit you, and if you don't, know that you expose yourself as a coward and someone that so obviously has no respect for the way the system works. If we cannot trust you to respect your own policies, how can we trust you to protect the children in our schools? And as I say, every time I come up here, contrary to what the students say, they are not hateful words, nor are they bigoted, discriminatory, or insidious. It's an attempt to shame what are perfectly reasonable requests. Emotional blackmail is the only argument that they can make because there is no logical and factual argument to be made against it. They say it is not social contagion, then admit that most teachers openly support transgenderism regardless of parents' wishes
Thirty seconds.
and actively support and spread said ideology. Sure sounds like social contagion to me. A student has even told you that the teachers in our school system will blatantly disregard a parent's wish that their child is called by their real name, not a dead name, but a live one, because no matter how much these children wish, the person they really are, the person that God created, is alive and well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Ramsey, Sylvia Ruffton, and then Keely Arnold.
Behind every great student is a teacher who believed in them, supported them, and truly listened to their students. As a recent 2023 graduate, I understand the true importance that good teachers have on a student's academic and personal success. As a student who was in the school system from kindergarten through 12th grade, my teachers stood by my side and helped me in any way they could. I couldn't tell you one bad experience that I had with a teacher with my time here. By implementing the new 2023 model policies, you would be tearing apart the crucial student-teacher relationships that separate VBCPS from other school systems. One of the common themes on the VBCPS website is great dreams need great teachers. But when a group of students are being marginalized and purposely misgendered by their teachers, you are not upholding that student's dream, but rather making the classroom a place full of bigotry and hate. We all understand the importance of a name, especially to transgender and non-binary students, whose dead name is not a part of their identity. If the new model policies were to be implemented, you would be forcing teachers to be put in uncomfortable situations and call students by a name they don't want to be called. When this happens, students will stop speaking up in class in hopes that their dead name won't be called. These students will experience uncomfortable moments in their only safe space, and the student-teacher relationship will be single-handedly destroyed. Transgender and non-binary students' school experience is just as important as their cisgender peers. Do not put teachers in uncomfortable situations by making them tear apart their relationships with their students that they worked so hard to create. It's hard enough to be a transgender student at school. Please give them the opportunity to make their school experience a little bit more enjoyable. Don't listen to those today who come here with their hearts full of hate. Listen to the students who are just trying to make their schools better. While many of the adults here to speak tonight have children within the school system, many of them are very removed from VBCPS. The classroom is a very different place than it was 20 to 30 years ago. Embracing change within the classroom is what separates a good school system from a great one. Listen to the teachers, the students, and the parents who are active within VBCPS and protect transgender students within the classroom. I would also like to clarify real quick that the ballots and the students come first, but it's on a first-come-first-serve basis. Same with the adult speakers
Thirty seconds.
who are here are the ones who signed up first and then those who come after them. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Sylvia Ruffton, then Keely Arnold, number 19 had to cancel, and then it would be Dariel Clark.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Ruffton. As a mother, grandmother, and taxpayer, I have been at school board meetings in person or online numerous times during the past several years. I have listened as parents pleaded with you to make Virginia Beach schools a safe place for their children. I have also heard the many schooled arguments put forth by students who are either confused about their sexual identity or sympathizing with those who are. In all these conversations, you as seasoned educators have heard the truth and also witnessed the delusion of some of a younger generation grappling for truth and being led astray by a false ideology. In this regard, I heard a recent speaker state the obvious truth, that no student can change the DNA they are born with, which determines their sexual identity. They went on to say that every cell in their body bears that proof, and that is a scientific fact. These transgender ideas being promoted by the radical left are not harmless when allowed to seep into the policies and practices of our public school system, as you have heard from the testimonies of Chloe Cole and Sage's mom last month. They related the real threat and tragic consequences in their lives these bad practices produced. It's now time for you to make a decision, and hopefully a wise one. One will put in place safeguards for these students on loan to you by their parents and legal guardians. Please vote to adopt Governor Yonkin's 2023 model policies regarding transgender students. So much is at stake that you cannot escape the fact that you will be judged by your vote on this issue. You will be judged by parents, you will be judged by voters, you may in some cases be judged by courts of law. But more importantly, you will be judged by Heavenly Father, who is totally loving but righteously just. Remember that it was Jesus who spoke serious and sober warnings to those who dared to cause the innocent to stumble. Please restore the trust we, the citizens of Virginia Beach, had in you when you assumed office. We recognize and appreciate the difficulties you face as part of being on this board. We are praying that you will now take a stand to protect kids
Thirty seconds.
and parental rights by implementing the new 2023 provisions, transgender issue model policies in their entirety. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Keely Arnold, Dariel Clark, and then Todd Hayes.
Hello, good evening. So I have to say a few things about some of the things said by speakers tonight, and I heard some mistruths. I was here at that school board meeting when the incident happened, and I happened to be sitting across the aisle from the incident. And I saw the man come back, lean over in aggressive manner towards the lady, and she had the sign in her lap. So I don't buy that they're using that as a ploy in their speeches, and the truth needs to come out. So let me get to my speech so I can get to it all in time. The 2023 model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in Virginia schools has been released. It is time for this school board to implement these policies in order to be in compliance with state law. At a recent school board hearing, the Chair, Trenace Rigs, made it very clear that when the Yonkin new policies were to come out, the school board would be following them. Let's see if she follows through on her words. Because of this school board's majority vote for the Jessica Owens and Jennifer Franklin resolution, our kids can change their name and gender identity without the parent's knowledge or consent. So this school board is the reason teachers will conceal a child's gender status and name change from parents. Many on the school board rationalize it by saying, you know, it's just a nickname. Let's call it what it really is. It is a school board propagating and allowing teachers to teach kids to lie to their parents about serious life-altering decisions, basically impairing and damaging the family unit. If the majority of this school board chooses to disobey our state law by not following the 2023 model policies, they will be held accountable, not only by assuming all legal responsibilities and consequences for noncompliance, but also by likely losing their seats in this upcoming election. Remember, you work for those who elected you. Parents and tax-paying citizens who voted you in can certainly vote you out. And Ms. Rigs, next time you decide to quit the school board, actually resign for real because you have been intolerant, hostile, and non-inclusive, and you lacked decorum as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dariel Clark, Todd Hayes, and then Diana Howard.
What's up? I'm Darrell Clark. Reject Glenn Yonkin's model policies. I mean, what more do y'all really need to hear, for real, the ones who are actually listening? What more do y'all really need to hear from the youth? Like, what more do y'all need them to say? They've dropped nothing but like facts, their own experiences, statistics, like all these things. Like, what more do y'all really need to hear to actually care enough to just let them have that security? Like, it's not hard to care. I mean, y'all talk about kids' safety first or whatever, but to accept the governor's policies would go directly against their safety. That would be objectively wrong, to be honest. It's almost been a year they've been coming up here. It's summertime, they ain't trying to be here. You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't understand how this is still happening. Like, it blows my mind that we are here again, even though this is my second time here, but you know, I stand with them. And what irks me about this board especially is student-first Virginia's presence on it and those endorsed by them. You know, last time I was talking about how conservatives want to essentially eradicate trans people and queerness from society, and when I said that, I believe it was, it might have been David Culpepper, who had his big grin on his face, which I found pretty unsurprising when he presented his substitution around 1:30 that night. Basically, doing just that, there was no mention of queer or trans students in his substitute resolution. Some of y'all were in support of it, and then Kathleen Brown presented one like around 2:00 AM. This is back in June. Around 2:00 AM, she presented one with a smile on her face, and the obscene disrespect that is to allow
Thirty seconds.
like it's cool. Yeah, it's such a disgrace. Reject the governor's model policies. Like, reject them. Listen to these kids. Reject the governor's model policies for this city and for the whole state. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Todd Hayes, Diana Howard, and then Beth Labarre. Todd Hayes? Diana Howard? Beth Labarre?
Good evening. My name is Beth Labarre. I'm a school social worker and a parent of a current student at Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Coming out is a journey, not a destination. An individual does not merely realize they are part of the LGBT community until their loved ones in the same day. With whom and when an individual shares this information is a personal process. With whom and when an individual shares this information is a personal process that takes time, and only the individual themselves should have control over these circumstances. The situations and climate that surround an individual coming out to those closest to them has a huge impact in that person's mental health and emotional well-being. This is where the gift of time comes into play. Time to ponder and digest realizations about oneself is crucial. Being forced to share something as personal as sexual orientation or gender identity before the individual is emotionally prepared to would be like demanding someone attend work or school with only half of their body clothed. We all have the right to control how and when we will let others in on such an intimate part of our identity, just as we have the right to dress our bodies fully before being held out for all the world to see. Not only does the abrupt reporting of a student's identity to their parents before they are ready cause emotional upheaval for the student, but the family system as a whole can be negatively impacted. There is potential for harm to be done to the parent-child relationship when outsiders try to control the coming-out process. When allowed to evolve organically, the process of sharing realizations about one's identity can strengthen feelings of trust and validation within a family unit. Parents and students both have the right to experience this growth in their relationship without interference. The process of coming out to family is an aspect of a student's and family's lives that we cannot afford to get wrong. Please reject the model policies.
Our next speaker is Don Labarre.
Hello, I'm Don Labarre. I'm a Virginia Beach resident. I'm also a parent of a child in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and I'm speaking to you as a parent because I'm concerned about my kid and the kids in Virginia Beach Public Schools. Homer talked about regret and how some people, they tried being trans and they didn't like it and they regretted it. I can understand that because I have regrets. I cut my hair into a mohawk when I was in junior high, and I sure regretted that, and I regret that the photos are still out there. But you live and you learn. Nobody told me I couldn't do that. I tried it, and it didn't work out. I know there's people that maybe they still have a mohawk, and God bless them, but that's not me. So saying that you can't go back and forth because one person decided that it wasn't for them, I think that's kind of irrelevant. Ms. Sylvia came up here, and I was watching her on the video, and I saw her sticker on her shirt that says, "Protect Every Child." And I believe that, too. I believe that we should protect every child. I don't think you should say, "Well, let's just protect the white ones. Let's just protect the boys. Let's just protect the straight people." No, you should protect every child. That's what we're here for. So when I was in high school, I'll make a quick story. When I was in high school, I went to a counselor, and I talked to him, and I felt comfortable talking with him. And I was going back and forth on whether I should join the military. My father was in the military, I was thinking about doing it, but that was a big life choice. So I went and talked to him, and he kept that in confidence. He knew that that was between me and him. Now, I didn't go and tell him that I'm going to go shoot somebody. I didn't tell him that there was some crime going on, because if I did, I would expect him to report that to the authorities or to my parents. But he didn't report that I was thinking about going in the military. I think that if a child wants to talk to their counselor and talking about the things that they're going through in life and how they're questioning what their gender is, I think that's fine, and I think that the counselor should be able to talk to these kids without having to go back and report back to their parents on something like that. I don't think that that's something as serious as saying that I'm going to hurt somebody or that I'm.
Thirty seconds.
I've been hurt. I don't think that's the same thing. So I think you should not implement the 2023 Model Guidelines. I think that you are a school board representing Virginia Beach, so you should speak for the Virginia Beach and not just for the whole state. The state has told you what they want you to do. It's up to you to decide what's right for your city. So I would like you guys to do that, and please reject the 2023 Model Guidelines. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Raskin.
I would like to discuss the selection process to ODS that took place earlier this year. I'm Dr. Michael Raskin. I'm a recent graduate from EVMAS and an ODU-trained doctor of philosophy in biomedical sciences. The reason I mention this is even though I was trained overseas, I am familiar with U.S. education system, both as a student and as a teaching professor. And I entered neither one of these training programs as a result of a random draw or a lottery. What happened with the selection process to ODS this year is deeply concerning. Lottery-based or random-draw approach has never been used to such extent as it was this year. I think we may be talking about single digits in years prior, but never triple digits. As a result, many profoundly gifted students did not get access to the level of education that they deserve. Such students can only thrive when they receive an education from gifted, trained teachers on a daily basis, not on a weekly basis. And these are the students that are three to four standard deviations above the mean, statistically speaking. Such a deep reliance on a random draw has been mentioned in the five-year plan before as a possible tool to explore, you know, explore the possibility of improving the equity, which is a great noble cause, but I think we went from a hunch straight to implementation without, kind of really bypassing the drawing board. So another question is, how do you think possibly a process of randomization that is designed to produce an unpredictable and unsystematic result could help us improve equity? I'm not sure I have the answer to that. And how does subjecting a child to a randomization can be done without properly investigating and disclosing its methodology or obtaining a consent from a parent? This may not only be unethical, this may not even be legal. I don't know about that part, but it's certainly something that does not sound correct. So we should not apply the same principle that is used in Russian roulette to selecting the most talented and vulnerable members of this community?
Thirty seconds.
So if there's an avenue that you feel we need to explore, or how we can use randomization to improve equity, I think it should be done with an input from the public and from the experts. Meanwhile, I urge the school board to vote against the proposed changes, to use this methodology and perpetuate it, and I also ask the school board members to come together with us parents to work on the solution as soon as possible.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just wanted to do a time check.
So what are, what is the board's? Do you want to go on? That's about 30 minutes, 24, 25 to 30 minutes, or move on with our information? Follow our bylaws and move on? Okay. Is that, wait a minute, is that what everybody wants to do? Do you want to give them the opportunity? Yes, Ms. Brown?
Madam Chair, it would appear to me that the topics that we are going to be discussing may take a while. I just, I added that up to about 21 minutes of speakers. You know, I defer to your decision, but I imagine that the topics we're discussing are going to take a little bit of time, so just take that into account. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? What do you think? What do you think, Ms. Owens?
While our topics may or may not take a while to discuss, I think it's important that for transparency's sake, when we tell people what to expect, that that's what we try and stick to. If our role is that we will still hear from people, they will still have the opportunity, but that we're going to move on to our other business at 8 o'clock, when we factor in that we have staff members who are present and also those who are at home watching, I think it's important that they know what to expect from us because we've put it out clearly, and that's what we stick to.
Okay, are we all in agreement to that? I'm seeing heads nod. Okay, so we're going to go on with our agenda. We will come back to our speakers after the agenda on number 13. So we're now with number 12 information. Gifted Learning Plan Amendment. This is Dr. Kelly. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, Dr. Robertson. I am Lorena Kelly, the Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, and this evening I will be providing a follow-up to the June 27th School Board Workshop presentation with a focus on the amendment to the local plan for the education of the gifted. I'm joined by Mr. Colwin Coleheffer, the Chairman of the Gifted Community Advisory Committee. Since our last meeting, we have worked to solicit multiple stakeholder feedback to inform our work. We're here to request your approval for the amendments that have been made to the local gifted plan to ensure alignment between current practice and the plan. Approval is needed to ensure we're ready to schedule and begin the upcoming gifted screening process, which begins September 7th. And it impacts the gifted identification and ODS selection for the 24-25 school year. Please know, while we're requesting approval of the current amendments to ensure we can begin necessary processes, we recognize we have more work to do, and approval of these amendments will also enable us to continue the critical work needed to develop the next local plan for the education of gifted students. We will continue to take input and make modifications when applicable and appropriate as we embark on the larger journey to review and revise the five-year plan. The information you received in your packet includes all proposed amendments. However, this presentation will focus on portions of the amendment that generate the most discussion among administration and the Gifted Community Advisory Committee. The proposed draft amendment includes strike-throughs and additions in red font. Additionally, a copy of all proposed amendments was sent to provide the opportunity for you to review the proposed amendments in advance of this evening's meeting. If you have questions, please consider recording them and holding them until the end for us to discuss. As you may recall, at the June 27th School Board Workshop, we reviewed steps taken from gifted identification to student selection for all donation school. We also shared the spring 2023 selection process was the first time the number of students identified for potential enrollment at all donation, meaning students receiving the highest rank of four, exceeded the number of open seats at ODS for all grade levels. This had been the situation for grades three, four, five, seven, and eight for at least 15 years, and a random selection process previously used at those grade levels was employed for rising second and sixth graders for the first time this past spring. After sharing an in-depth description of the all-donation school selection process, we shared the need to amend the local plan to ensure the actions that have been taken and communicated through a wide variety of channels, such as school board meetings, school board memos, alert now messages to parents, and information on the Virginia Beach Schools website are reflected and posted in the local plan. Of the six next steps presented at the June 27th School Board Meeting, three have been completed. As you know, the Director of K-12 and Gifted Programs was recommended and approved at the July 25th, 2023 School Board Meeting. I will continue to serve as the lead point of contact to ensure a smooth transition for the new director. We've also developed an amendment of the local plan, and I'm sharing it with you this evening, and I plan to bring it back to consent at a later board meeting. The amended plan that we will review tonight aligns to the communication provided prior to and during the 22-23 school year to the community and to the board. We conducted two summer gifted community advisory committee meetings to discuss the recommended amendment. Ms. Franklin participates in the gifted community advisory committee meetings and can provide additional information. Additionally, the school board, senior staff, and I have received, thoroughly reviewed, and discussed several emails from a group of approximately 16 families whose children were not selected to attend all-donation school through random selection process previously mentioned. The approximately 16 families have communicated extensively with the gifted community advisory committee, and many of them attended both meetings. At the first gifted community advisory committee meeting, that took place July 12th. At that time, the committee had 13 members. 10 members attended the meeting. At that time, the committee reviewed and did not provide recommendations specific to the amendment. At the second meeting, which took place on July 26, 2023, the committee had 11 members due to two members resigning and seven members participate in the meeting. We have reflected on the input and feedback received from stakeholders and have made some adjustments to the draft amendment presented to the gifted community advisory committee based on input and recommendations. This slide includes the three next steps that we're continuing to work through. We're committed to improving communication with all stakeholders. Once guidance regarding the amendment is provided, the team will move forward with the timeline and communication for the 24-25 school year through a partnership with media. Next, the gifted office will be able to begin the process to create a task force to initiate the process for the new local plan for the education of the gifted. And finally, the comprehensive evaluation of the gifted resource cluster program is currently underway. As you know, programs are regularly evaluated, and this is the time for this program to be reviewed. Data are being analyzed, and a formal evaluation report will be shared during the 23-24 school year. This combined with stakeholder feedback over the last year will help to identify enhancements, inform professional learning, and support continuous improvement. As I shared during the last meeting, a detailed explanation of the all-donation process was described, as well as clarification regarding the continuum of services provided by Virginia Beach City Public Schools. To ensure we begin with a level of clarity, I will review that Virginia Beach City Public School clearly states in the local plan that students who are identified as gifted are eligible for services in their neighborhood school resource cluster model. This is in alignment with Virginia statutes and administrative regulations, which states that identified gifted students shall be offered placement in instructional setting that provides appropriately differentiated curriculum and instruction provided by professional instructional personnel trained to work with gifted students. Our plan specifies that the GRT, in collaboration with the teacher, must differentiate the regular education program to meet the needs of each gifted student in alignment with Virginia Code. As a reminder to the board, BBCPS uses a holistic evaluation, which includes the use of the NAGLIERI and the COGAT to screen students for the purpose of referring students for gifted assessment. The NAGLIERI Nonverbal Ability Test, or the N-NAT, developed by Pearson, is a standardized test designed to assess the reasoning ability of students ages 5 to 17. The N-NAT is utilized extensively in the U.S. as part of the admissions process for gifted and talented programs. The COGAT, a multi-measure assessment, provides opportunities for identification in numerous areas of reasoning. Having an assessment that measures aptitude in more than one area provides greater opportunity to identify students with high academic potential. It provides verbal, quantitative, and nonverbal reasoning scores, which many states use to identify children for gifted services. This information is used to support differentiated instruction based on the abilities of each learner, not to identify the bands of giftedness. This is important to note, as the power of an assessment like the COGAT is the information it provides regarding different areas of reasoning and helps educators appropriately respond and extend learning for all students. A complete copy of the amendment and updated local plan for the education of the gifted have been provided to the board. As I shared previously, two gifted community advisory committee meetings were held to review the draft amendment and solicit their feedback. Not all items included in the amendment will be reviewed. While you have the full proposal of changes in your packet, I will review the items that generated the most discussion. Based on the input from stakeholders, including the members of the gifted community advisory committee who attended the meetings, modifications were made to the original draft that was provided to the committee. During the board presentation, input and recommendations from the members of the gifted advisory committee who attended the meeting will be shared. I will highlight some of the modifications included. I will highlight some of the modifications included with each modification. For each modification, I will share the language currently in our local plan, noting deletions with strike-throughs, and indicating new language with red font. As we've shared, our priority is to ensure our plan reflects the current practices that we have communicated and implemented. On the screen, you will see an example of what is currently included in the local plan. This shares that first and fifth grade students are screened with the NAGLIERI, and students scoring in the 90th percentile are recommended for additional testing. This paragraph is also duplicated on page 72. Here, you will see the example of the revision, which captures the current practice. All first grade students are screened with the N-NAT and the COGAT. Additionally, all students who receive a score in the 90th percentile in any test have an application automatically generated. This will update our plan and ensure consistency between practice and our plan. Additionally, please note that through this process, we will ensure all fifth grade students who receive a score in the 90th percentile in the N-NAT will have an application automatically generated for consistency as well. All fifth graders have been screened with the N-NAT and had the opportunity for further assessment with the COGAT. The only change will be the automatic generation of the application. Input from the members of the gifted community advisory committee who attended the meeting was provided. They shared a request to ask the school board to consider the impact this has on the number of students identified and placed in the resource cluster classroom. The members present at the meeting would like the board to consider the impact on GRTs and remind the board of the recommendations provided by the gifted community advisory committee to support GRTs in the resource cluster, specifically Recommendations 1, 2, and 6. As a quick reminder, Recommendation 1 highlights that due to the growing population of gifted students, support be provided to building administrators in prioritizing the essential GRT responsibilities. Recommendation 2 addresses the tight clustering of students to support GRTs to provide effective coaching and instruction. And their sixth recommendation from the gifted community advisor committee was allocating additional gifted temporary employment agreement staff to support Renaissance, Spanish immersion, and exceptionally large populations of gifted students. The amendment includes the removal of parent information to align to our current practice. The gifted community advisory committee and the school board were made aware of this change during the 21-22 school year. And for the 21-22 and 22-23 school year, gifted identification and selection processes were conducted without written parent narrative. When the modification occurred, it was made based on input from experts in the field to remove barriers for parents. The decision to remove the parent narrative is made and was supported by the board primarily due to the fact that it does not rely on the ability of parents to inform a student's eligibility for gifted services. Additionally, parent permission shifted to an opt-out practice for screening in 22-23 to support parents and students with application processes. Parents who do not want the application generated are able to opt out of the application process. This was communicated to parents prior to gifted identification and selection processes This slide demonstrates the revision of the removal of the parent information. The seven members of the gifted community advisory committee present at the second meeting made a motion to table this, as members had differing opinions, with some wanting to remain consistent with the practice and with some who wanted to include parent input. The members present will continue to review and discuss other options. They considered options such as checklist that parents may complete and submit. This will be part of their ongoing meetings and will follow up with recommendations. Administration recommends continuing with current practice that has been utilized for the last two years for gifted identification and all-donation selection, and amending the plan to align with the current actions due to the reasons stated previously and due to the timeline of gifted testing beginning, and the need for the amendment to be in place for that process to be initiated. We are committed to working with the gifted community advisory committee and continuing to receive additional stakeholder expert, so stakeholder and expert input as we embark on a full review of the five-year plan. This slide demonstrates what is currently in our plan. It is important to clarify that students in grades one and five are screened for gifted. That means that all students are administered assessments. Applications are automatically generated for students who score at 90th percentile on any of the tests and are provided the opportunity to opt out from gifted identification considerations and ODS selection. Students in grades two, three, four, six, and seven who want to be considered for enrollment in grades three, four, five, seven, and eight must apply to attend. The revisions on the next slide will demonstrate the change. It is important to note that students in grades two, three, four, six, and seven are currently in their neighborhood schools, and due to limited capacity, students may consider enrollment at ODS rather than the gifted cluster placement, as ODS is an option families may consider. The original draft amendment included the replacement of the term placement when separate from the selection and placement committee. Based on input provided by the gifted community advisory committee, we removed that from the amendment and specifically noted the two places within the entire document where placement is recommended to be changed to enrollment. As a reminder, VBCPS provides placement in a gifted cluster classroom, which meets the requirements of the Virginia Code. This recommended modification also includes the removal of top candidates being invited to attend ODS. Traditionally, the number of top candidates or students receiving the top rating, rising into grades three, four, five, seven, and eight, have exceeded the number of open seats, and a random draw has been utilized for all open seats in those grade levels. Therefore, this statement is not and has not been accurate. During the 23-24 selection process, the number of top students or students with the highest rank in grades one and five also exceeded the number of open seats, resulting in the same process and making the statement inaccurate in all grade levels. The seven members of the gifted community advisory committee that were present at the meeting shared input regarding the removal of the top candidates being invited, and they were unable to come to consensus. Additionally, the quorum that was present also was unable to come to consensus regarding the replacement of the word placement for enrollment. This slide demonstrates the revised verbiage. Based on input, we adjusted language for clarity to differentiate between the screening grade levels and other grade levels. Additionally, it is important to note that we cannot guarantee that all students with the top rating are invited to attend, as we have finite number of open seats which differ at each grade level. As I discussed in the previous amendment, we're proposing the change of the term placement with enrollment in two places in the entire document. The first was in the previous amendment, and this slide demonstrates the second of the two. And this modification is necessary to ensure the accurate use of the term. As I stated, the original draft amendment included the replacement of the term placement when separate from selection and placement committee throughout the entire document. To foster clarity and ensure transparency, we removed that from the amendment and specifically noted the two places where this is being done. The two changes are necessary to ensure accurate use of the terms. Like one of the previous slides, this also requires the removal of top students being invited, as the number of top students may exceed the number of open spots, resulting in not all top students or highest rating being invited to attend. The next section, selection for ODS, has questions that were included in the local plan, however, were not included in the ODS selection process document posted on the VBC Schools' site. The gifted community advisory committee recommended that the current information remain. However, the questions included are not part of the holistic evaluation that the ODS selection committee considers when reviewing applications and determining ratings, and could lead to a misunderstanding that these questions are answered as part of the process and therefore are recommended for removal. The administration is recommending that the questions be removed and this portion of the amendment read as listed on this slide. This will include the clarity around the grade levels that apply and the grade levels with generated application and the removal of the questions. To ensure the plan is aligned to our current practice, we recommend the modification displayed on the slide of changing the rating scale from a five-point scale to a four-point scale. The change to a four-point scale occurred during the 21-22 school year. Two ODS selections have occurred using a four-point scale. Although at first glance, moving from a five to a four may look like a big change, the criteria have not been greatly altered. By removing the score of one, this removed the "not recommended." This was the major change, which had little impact due to the fact that only gifted students can apply, and by removing that "not recommended," this shifted us to a four-point scale. We reviewed this information in depth during the June 27th School Board Meeting. As a reminder, the board was aware of the change, the four-point scale, that was used for the past two ODS selection processes. This means that school year 21-22 and 22-23. Additionally, a memo was shared with the school board on August 17, 2022, with a memo to the board that reviewed the four-point scale and the specifics of the selection process that would be followed this year. To ensure the plan is aligned to our current practice, we recommend the modification displayed on the slide of changing the rating scale from a five-point scale to a four-point scale. The gifted community advisory committee recommended maintaining the five-point scale. Additionally, they made the recommendation included at the bottom of the screen and would like to continue the conversation by exploring rubrics and matrices that can be utilized during the selection process. While we continue to reflect and use the input from the gifted community advisory committee, we need to keep in mind that this plan includes grades two through eight. We have found that this is not practicable, as we have no open seats in some grade levels at ODS, and therefore, we follow the Code of Virginia to ensure we are able to provide placement in instructional setting that provides appropriate differentiated curriculum and instruction provided by professional instructional personnel trained to work with gifted students. We remain open to adjusting in the future, and we recognize that this is an area that can be adjusted. We appreciate the partnership with the board and are grateful for the trust they bestow on us as professionals. We request the following two statements be added to the plan to provide administration the opportunity to make reasonable adjustments and interpretation due to annual review of the goals of the five-year plan. The gifted community advisory committee provided feedback on the original wording that we had in the first draft, and we revised the statements that are included on this slide. We understand the importance of transparency and have fully committed to keeping the board and community informed of modifications. The Office of Gifted feels expeditious, smooth progress of the program. The school administration needs to be able to make modifications based on our needs and circumstances that occur throughout the year. We would not be making significant programmatic changes or changes like changes to the rating We appreciate the input that we have received, and we're looking forward to continuing our partnership with multiple stakeholders as we continue with our next steps that are works in progress, including the full review of the local plan and the preparation for the new plan. We also appreciate the board and the community's understanding of the amazing services Virginia Beach City Public Schools provides through the Resource Cluster Program and through ODS, middle years, IB, and academies. We understand that we have high numbers of talented and motivated students, and will continue to explore ways to meet their needs in a variety of ways. This concludes our presentation, and I'm here with colleagues to answer your questions.
Okay, so thank you for all of your work getting this ready. So I find that the amendments on 70 and 72, 80 and 81 are ones that I personally find to be agreeable. However, I have some thoughts on, and you'll have to excuse me because there's a lot going on all at once. I took some notes and on page 81, I'm sorry, Amendment 82, it says, let's see, top applicants, the phrase for top applicants, let's see, the top candidates are invited to attend the school. I would personally like to see that still in there, maybe invited to enroll, but that's my personal thing. I'm not sure what my colleagues think about that, but then on 84, you know what, I'm sorry, I'll skip 84 for right now. I'm going to go to 86. I really do believe we should do a one through five scale. I don't believe we should do a one through four scale. And I would like to see the one through five that was intended when this was initially done continue. And I also would like to see us add language that would indicate that there will be individual ratings. There won't be any conversation for consensus building upon ratings. So that would be something that, and that's actually, to me, that's one of the most important things that I would like to see. I will not be able to support it unless we have individual ratings. 116, scroll down here. For Amendment 116, I don't have a problem when the plan is silent, that the school administration has the authorization to make reasonable interpretation with notice to the school board, because if we don't direct you, then you have to make a decision. But I am a little squeamish about the language in the top bullet. And so those are, those are my thoughts. I can't remember what was on page 84. Sure, I'll figure it out in a minute, but I will follow up with you. Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
I was going to try to go last, because I have quite a few, so I'll try to, I'll try to get through them as quickly as I can, and I can just give it to somebody else here.
Okay, go ahead.
So my first concern is, and I'm going to try to quote from the regulations from the Virginia Department of Education that I have printed out here. My first concern is that under the regulation, this is the one called Local Plan, Local Advisory Committee, and Annual Report. It says, "The development process for the school division's local plan for the education of the gifted shall include opportunities for public review of the school division's plan." We received a memo a couple of days ago regarding some recommended changes by the administration, and some of those recommended changes that are in that memo are not in this document that's been put out to the public in the agenda. So I have major concerns about that with the lack of transparency to the public when the board's getting one memo for changes and the public is getting something different. So I think that needs to be corrected. I have some other major concerns about written consent. In the Virginia, the VDOE regulations under Parental Rights for Notification, Consent, and Appeal, it says, "School divisions shall provide written notification to and seek written consent from parents." It doesn't say, "Ask parents if they want to opt out." It says, "Seek written consent to conduct any required assessment to determine referred student's eligibility for the school division's gifted education program." And so throughout these documents that I read, that we received in the memo and here in this package, I see "opt out" quite a few times that I personally believe should have written consent from the parents. This may be the first time since I've been on the school board since 2017 that we've received a recommendation from the administration that the gifted advisory committee did not recommend. So can you tell me why administration is making recommendations against the will of the gifted advisory committee?
The gifted advisory committee is just that. It's an advisory committee, so they provide input to us, and we are looking at the information that has been considered by this board and the...
and others over the last several years from the experts that were part of the process that led us to this place where we are now. So we are listening to the input from the Gifted Community Advisory Committee, and we're navigating that along with the things that we currently have in place with the practices that we've shared and have not amended in our plan, but have shared and have actually implemented. So I didn't know if you were asking a question earlier about that written consent. But I did want to let you know that we have communicated with the Virginia Department of Education. And we have, in consultation with them, heard that this is a common practice in other divisions, such as Fairfax County, as an example, also do the same thing by ensuring that written notification is provided to parents through multiple methods, which we do. And we've shared the letters that go out at the beginning of the year for the two grade levels that are screened. So I also want to make sure that that's clear. It's in the, it's in grade one and grade five because those are screening grade levels and everyone gets those assessments. And those are the ones where we've generated that application. However, have provided clearly and in multiple ways for parents to have the opportunity to opt out. In the other grade levels, parents are providing that written notification because we are not screening in those grade levels. So parents actually have to make that application and make that note. So I just wanted to make sure I clarified that point. So as far as the Gifted Advisory Committee, we're continuing to listen to their input and work with them as we work through this amendment and then as we begin the bigger journey into the local five-year plan.
So I guess I would like to get something in writing from the VDOE saying that an "opt out" is acceptable rather than the language here in the regulation, seeking written consent. So if we could get something in writing from the VDOE saying that this is okay, I would feel more comfortable with that.
Ms. Manning, you also want to go back and read that. I've discussed this with the school administration, and you might be reading that more broadly than it, if you actually read it, it says it has to be a required assessment for a referred student. What I believe the administration is telling you, which you've heard some of the NAGLARI and the COGAT are not required assessments, and they're not given to referred students. A referred student comes after the NAGLARI and the COGAT are administered. That lets us know whether the student's in the range to be referred for it. So I'm not sure technically, and I think what VDOE was telling us, technically, the requirements for that section are a required assessment. Again, NAGLARI and COGAT are not required assessments. And a referred student for us is someone that we've decided to send on to the gifted identification process. Once you start that process, you're referred. At the time of first graders taking this test, they've not been referred for gifted services. So I don't know that they meet the definition of a referred student. And again, I don't believe that the NAGLARI and the COGAT qualify as written required assessments. They're a screening tool that we use. And the required assessments come when we put together the portfolio package, the packets that we do for identified students. So you read it, I can see why you're reading it one way, but we can also read it that way. And we believe that that may be what VDOE is looking at because other large school divisions, like Fairfax, have the same process in there. And VDOE has determined that that's not in violation. So I think the wording is very important to look at. Now maybe, I don't know that VDOE will give us a ruling on that. But when I read that language, when I read it very specifically, I don't know that it applies to the same, in the same way that you're reading it.
So it says to, the written consent, or required assessment. Written consent for parents to conduct any required assessment to determine a referred student's eligibility.
Right. So we're not, you have to be referred. So you're not referred when your first grader taking NAGLARI and COGAT. You haven't been referred yet. We look at your test scores on that, and then we refer you for gifted identification. I think it's a very technical term. "Referred" is when we fill out that application and we send you on for the next stage, which is you go to the Gifted Identification Committee. So if you look at that term, "referred student," at the time you're taking the NAGLARI and the COGAT, because we don't know the results on it, we haven't referred you yet. If you're not in the 90th percentile at that point, you would not be referred on to the committee that will do the eligibility. And again, I'm not sure it's a written, it's not a written requirement for eligibility that you take NAGLARI or COGAT. It's something we use as a screening tool. We consider it like we do grades and other things. But it's not required to be found eligible for special education.
But, but this is saying that an application is going to be automatically generated and families may opt out of applying to ODS. So students are being, students are having an application generated to ODS without written consent from their parents?
Well, but that's not, again, we have the statute. You have to give written notice and written, you've got to get written consent from the parent for a required assessment for a referred student. So if you very carefully read that sentence, you know, that an application is an required assessment. That's testing after we've referred you. So I understand what you're saying, but I'm also saying you can read the statute and a regulation. It's not a statute, it's a regulation in a way that what we're, what they're, the way they're implementing is not inconsistent.
So it sounds like we can read it a couple of different ways. So maybe if we could get some confirmation from the VDOE in writing, it would be beneficial for us to have.
I'm not sure that VDO will, I have talked to Dr. Kelly. I'm not sure that could be written. They have approved this plan before. And what they've told us is other school divisions are following this process. I don't know if they will put it in writing. But we could certainly submit up for a technical review to see if they'll review that.
They've reviewed, they've, they have approved this, these amendments?
We haven't submitted these amendments yet.
Right. You said they've approved this plan before?
They have reviewed your five-year plan, local plans.
But this wasn't in our five-year plan.
But you're asking for the written procedures on there. So again, I don't know that they've looked at it specifically for them. But I know that they have informed us that other school divisions using this process, it's not in violation of any regulation. So I would say, I know you're reading it one way. But if you very carefully read those words on there and how we interpret these tests, it's not, they're not in violation at this point.
Okay, I'll move on. I agree with Ms. Brown. I don't support moving from a five-point scale to a four-point scale because I believe that that condenses the applicants so that we can't determine the more profoundly gifted students as easily as we did before when it was a five-point scale in the plan that we had approved. So I don't support going back to a four-point scale. I also don't support the consensus building attribute that's been used over the last couple of years. I don't support that administration can make changes without the School Board approval. The purpose of this coming to the public and getting public input is so that the public can have input on the process and not just have changes made after the School Board has approved it. So I, that may be the thing in there I dislike the most. There are some things in here that I like, but I don't like the process by which we're doing it. I really believe strongly that we have to have public input and transparency in this process. And I just don't feel that the way we're doing it right now is accomplishing that. So I have a few other things, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to another Board member.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I have some things that we'll obviously be reviewing. But the one thing that I wanted to comment on while we were here today is on page six of our printout that Ms. Brown was pointing out, that line about the top candidates being invited to attend the school. I, based on the presentation, I, my understanding is that that line has to be adjusted. There's not an option for it not to be adjusted because it's simply impossible for that to occur in every grade level. When they're telling us that fifth graders can put in an application and/or fourth graders or whatever grade, and there's zero spots available, their application can be assessed and they can be 99.95% astronaut. But if we don't have a place for them, we're not going in and pulling out another student who is already in there, who may have scored 99 point whatever. They're already in there at that point. And so we have students that come in in second grade. And so the second grade spots, classrooms are open up into whatever number. But then those students are going up each grade level unless they move or decide that they're not going to be in the program anymore. But any student in our district who is between those grade levels can apply. And so if they have a magnificent application and they're a top candidate, we still can't say that they will be invited to attend the school unless there is a seat available. So I understand why we needed to change that. And unless your suggestion is certain grade levels will automatically be invited, which I don't, I still don't know how we would do to, because it sounds like a guarantee. But certainly, we know beyond a shadow of a doubt that there are certain grade levels that we cannot say they will be invited. We'll say that they can do the application and they'll be considered and that services will be provided wherever those services may be. And likely, they will be in their home school with a GRT. And so I hope as a Board that we will consider that that line might be a non-negotiable, even though it may feel uncomfortable for us at this point. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
Dr. Kelly, earlier this summer when we had this presentation, the one thing that really stood out to me was the five-point scale moving to a four-point scale. And so as we prepare to use that with our upper-grade students in the fall, what was really important was the elimination of the number one on that scale. And that's why I like the four-point scale. Because the number one said "not recommended." And as you stated, to get to that point where you've been recommended and you're being reviewed by the group of reviewers, why would anybody receive a number one? It says "not recommended." Of course, you're being recommended. You've made it to a certain level. And I had a problem with that, with that phrase, "not recommended." So that just seemed like such a narrow line of subjectivity for me. Like, how do you determine how someone would not be recommended if they've been recommended?
I would, I would like to just add to what you're saying. We use the ratings as a way to define groups. And so that's such an important point because if the opportunity happened that all fours go in, right? Then we start doing a random selection from a group of threes because we've defined those groups by the rating scale. There could be times, like recently, where we've gone to the two-rating scale. And if we ever had to go down to the one-rating scale because we did have that number of seats available, they would be recommended because the single criteria that has to be met is that these students are identified as gifted students. So I just wanted to make sure that I made that point about "not recommended" being one of the ratings.
Right. Yeah, that's a tough one for me. So clearly, our, I mean, you can't argue with the fact that our gifted population has grown exponentially. And in fairness, so was our special education population. We've had a growth there too. And so, yeah, I just, I really like the deletion of that "not recommended" piece. And I think that that makes it fair for, for all of those students. Because as a parent, I would want to know, why would you say my child wasn't recommended if he were recommended? So that's my only part in your presentation this evening.
Ms. Anderson?
So I understand and agree with the fact that you eliminated the rating of one. And you went from a rating of a five-point scale to a four-point scale. Because as Ms. Melnick just pointed out, when you had a five-point scale, number one was at the bottom, and it said "not recommended." So I understand why you went to a four-point scale, and I'm not against that. What I would like to see, well, first of all, I have a question. How many raters are on a team?
There are three that look at an application together.
Okay, that's what, that's what you had told us at our workshop last month. So what I would like to see is a differentiation so that all raters show their ratings. So if it's 4-4-3, or 4-4-2, or 4-3-3, whatever it is, I would like to see that continue. I know it, well, anyway, that's what I would like to see. And the reason for that is so that we can distinguish the profoundly gifted. If, if a student gets 4-4-4 and another student gets 4-4-3, obviously, that student who all three raters rated that student 4-4-4, you can see where that could show a differentiation and you could rate that student a little bit higher. I don't like it, I don't want to see a consensus where you just give everybody a four. I don't think that's fair, and it's not fair to the profoundly gifted. So that's, I would like to see you change that so that we see all three raters. I'm not trying to repeat myself, but do you get my point? I want to see the differentiation. And I want you to point out the profoundly gifted who all get all 4-4-4s, not a consensus where everybody agrees, okay, we'll give this student a four.
Ms. Anderson, I do want to interrupt you on one point. We keep using this phrase profoundly gifted. That is not anything that we test for. It is not anything that Virginia Department of Education recognized. It's not a regulatory standard.
Okay, I rescind that then.
I do want to care.
But what I want to see is the differentiation. Do you get my point? Because I do want to see a difference in why some students are rated higher than other students. And so, let me see if they're, the Gifted Advisory Committee said they recommend to adopt a process to score candidates in a more objective way to achieve greater differentiation with the goal of top candidates not exceeding the number of open seats. So that's what they want to see. And I think that's, that's what I would like to see in the future. I'm just giving you my opinion, so.
I agree, but I just want to note that we have to remember that we're talking about grades 2 through 8, and there's not always an open seat. So my question would be putting that back on the team, on what would that look like? What would that look like when there are no open seats or when there's one open seat? So just make sure that we're thinking about this in that broader term and not just thinking about 130 open seats because that's not what this plan is calling for. It's calling for that second through eighth grade. So that's my only recommendation is for us to be very thoughtful about what that looks like. Because I would be interested to know what your recommendations are to us in that situation.
Well, I recommend a greater distinguishing of, of the student's ability. And so if you have all three raters giving their scores and you have 4-4-4, then I would consider that student one of my top students. And then somebody who's a 4-4-3 would fall under that category. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that the Board is aware that when we made the change to have the children provided the opportunity to be included in the application process through the ENAT and the COGAT test, the Gifted CAC Board was actually in favor of that because they felt like we were excluding families that did not have the opportunity to provide the application because of lack of understanding, because of lack of resources. So I want to make sure that the Board understands that part of the amendment was actually something that the CAC did approve and was behind at the time when it was presented because we wanted to ensure that all children who might be in this certain percentile of the gifted students were given that opportunity and not excluded because of lack of understanding from their families, which would have to put in an application and so forth. So that was not part of what they did not recommend because at the time when we were discussing that, it was actually approved and recommended by the committee. by the committee. Now, perhaps we had a different committee at the time. Maybe this current committee does not now agree with that. But at the time when that was implemented, that actually was approved by that current committee. But as you know, we had some committee changes just recently. It's just like, you know, other committees change, this committee did as well. And I just wanted to address the scale. I, I understand the arguments on both sides, but I just have to go back to the numbers. And on a five-point scale, if you had a 554, then that would be an average of 4.667, basically four and five eights, okay? On a four-point scale, if you have a 443, that equates to a 3.667. So same five eights, just on one scale lower because it's a different number. So when we look at how that scale might be different, and I understand the one, removing the one or having a broader range, but ultimately, it's still going to, and it doesn't matter. If you have a five and four and a three, you still get a mean of four. A four, three, and two, you still get a mean of three. So I guess my point is that, that changing the scale doesn't necessarily change the placement of the number. Does that make sense? So I want to make sure that we don't get too bogged down by the scale because ultimately, it's still going to be an average of about five eights. You know, no matter how you do it, it's just going to be one point lower. So I don't want to get us to get too bogged down on the scale. Because quite frankly, I think it's going to give you the same average, just one point lower. I do agree with revisiting the consensus score. I feel like that has definitely, has shown to be problematic, perhaps. And so I want us to definitely revisit that for sure and look at that. I, I feel like, you know, we, it might have been a change that was tried, but I think that, you know, as we continue to move down this path, we realize that that was maybe not a good change and, and, you know, luckily, we, we're in a position where we can look at that again. And I think that as the board, we have to take a look at the fact that if we're looking at higher numbers and we don't have more room in the classrooms, we have to look at the potential of enhancing the gifted cluster program, okay? We've got to take a look at that because if that means more children who are identified as gifted are going to be in their regular classroom settings, we have to look at how that's going to be enhanced by the board, okay? We, I've got to be honest with you. It was a discussion that was already forthcoming because of the concerns that, ever since I've been on the Gifted CAC Committee, they, they have already had concerns about that. So it was forthcoming regardless of what happened here this year with these decisions. So I would definitely like to potentially put some extra time into this, maybe in a workshop or something that we look at and we can really talk about some of these in-depth solutions. So Dr. Kelly and her team can move forward really thoughtfully and logically, you know, aligning with what the, the Gifted CAC is also recommending. But I, I certainly think that we have to take more time, which is also going to be a budget item, colleagues, you know? We have to take more time looking at how the gifted cluster program is going to look moving forward. So thank you.
Ms. Martin.
So I agree with my colleagues in that we need to figure out a way to differentiate some more, which is probably by getting rid of this consensus scoring. My question really pertains to, is the 90 percentile cutoff for gifted identification a VDOE requirement?
No.
It is not. Okay. So that may be another opportunity for differentiation is we make that, the cutoff 94 percent. The reason why I say that is as our population grows in this area, we are embarking on a very big resident relocation initiative through the Department of Commerce. The capacity of ODS is going to outpace the number of identified students at the 90th percentile. And so we've got to find a way either to differentiate or add capacity, as Ms. Franklin recommended. So I really think we do need to take a long-term look at, at what this looks like. I understand we do need to make some immediate decisions because this testing begins September 7th, I believe you said. But I really want us to sit down and, and think through all of the costs, all of the potential population concerns, and what the capacity looks like and what the cluster program looks like as a whole. So, thank you.
Ms. Martin, I did speak with Dr. Kelly during the break. I know we were talking about September. She's, she indicated that there may be, there's a little flexibility because I am hearing there's a lot of things you want to discuss. So we're not act, we could back it up by a month or two without, if you want a little bit more time to do that, I don't know that we have to hold to it. What we were trying to do with the August 8th date is traditionally August is when we come back with the local plan review. And we did kind of rush the Gifted Advisory Committee to try to get recommendations with amendments. So when I talked to Dr. Kelly, hearing some of the concerns that we had, can they flex a little bit? She does think there's some room to flex and still stay within the schedule. So if you do feel like there is more, you want a little bit more community input, if you want to have, go back to the Gifted Advisory Committee, we could probably back it up late into September, I'm saying, October, we kind of have to make a decision probably by then to stay on schedule. But we do have a little bit of time.
That's good to hear. Okay. Ms. Weems.
Thank you. So on the slide, the, the amendment, page 82, and that's when the top candidates are invited. That's when that was taken out. Since the Gifted Advisory Committee and several of my colleagues have an issue with that, could we consider saying when space or when seats or whatever is the right terminology? When space is available, top candidates are invited. Would that solve that problem? Or when seats?
How would you do if you have more top candidates than available space? How do you want them to determine?
Well, the same way that we do now. Not, I mean, I mean, yeah.
A random draw.
A random draw.
All right. So let's say you have fifty, five seats available, but you have 60 candidates who've applied. And so how, help them understand how to get to the next stage?
Well, I mean, if they all, if they all are top and qualified, that, I mean, obviously, we need to differentiate and all that stuff, then we should have top candidates. But if not, if you only have one seat and you have six people vying for that one seat, you do have to somehow randomly select that. But, but that goes, okay, so that, that's my suggestion is when space or seats are available, top candidates. But, but my, my whole thing is we've got to be able to figure out how to differentiate. So we are getting our, and, and I've just learned that we can't say profoundly gifted, but we are getting the students that need these services, we're getting them in the building where they need the services. I mean, that, that to me is our, our top goal. So to differentiate, and I've heard other things. So can you pull up the slide that has the five scales? Can you do that, Dr. Kelly?
Absolutely.
The one through, yeah, one, okay. So I understand that one is like, yeah, not recommended. Why, why would it be there? But could we go through a five scale and just put five as, as our, as our few consistent, four shows strength in some application, then our three is actually now the strong in most application, our two is consistently strong, and one exceptionally strong and have it, you know, 99 percentile, I mean, whatever, exceptionally strong. So that when you're actually getting someone with three fives, they've just blown it out of the park. I mean, to me, that's, I mean, because to, strong and strong, what does consistently strong mean? Is it 90 percentile? I think exceptional is when you've got kids scoring 99% on every test, have straight A's, have great recommendations, I mean, blow it out of the park. So where are the, and, and we need to make sure that they're receiving the services that they need. So can we, instead of eliminate that fifth one or number one, can we just change them a little bit so we actually have exceptional? And if we want to, you know, talk about percentile, if we're not glued to the 90%, that exceptional group is kids who score, I mean, unbelievably on every single thing.
So I will share that you're definitely providing a lot of input as other stakeholders have. And the one thing that I would just like to remind everyone is that we do use that holistic evaluation. So when you're asking, you know, what does that look like? I, I know that we have to really consider what does that exceptionally gifted student look like? Because you have some students who are brilliant in math and you have other students who know eight languages, right? So it, when you're looking at that, what does exceptionally gifted look like? And how are you going to categorize that with a specific indicator? We need to think about those because it doesn't always look exactly the same. And we need to think about something other than just that numerical score. So just when, I'm just putting that out there for us to be thinking about because as Mrs. Linetti stated, you have a, a lot of input that you've provided tonight. And we, and as we stated throughout the presentation, we know that there's a lot of additional conversation and work to be done. So we are taking notes on everything that you're sharing and we'll have to, I guess, converse and decide what our next steps will be and what the timeline will be as we move forward.
Right. And I'm not qualified to do that. I'm not, you know, I don't have my master's degree in gifted, whatever. I would have my master's degree. But, but I'm just suggesting if we have one, two, three, four, five and really have it so it's more differentiated than just strong, consistently strong. I don't even, you know, I don't even really know what that means, strong. And then the next one, consistently strong. And then the consensus thing, like my colleagues, I, I think we've got to move away from that. Thank you so much. And I have, I have some more questions, but I'll do that offline. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Culpepper.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, what you, what you simply have here is a math problem, right? You've got, you've got roughly 1,000 kids from which you need to identify 130 to select. That's about 13%. That tells me you need to identify the top 5% and the 5% below that and the 5% below that, right? So what you need here is more fidelity, not less. I can gently beat the dead horse that the consensus system is probably your first Achilles heel that has caused you to get in this position where you've got essentially all 130 kids in one bin, more than 130 kids in the first bin, right? And that's what puts in this problem. The, the four-point scale versus the five-point scale, again, what you need is more fidelity, not less fidelity. So I would be in favor of the five-point scale. We pointed out before that the one, as it's currently defined, is useless. So perhaps you need to re-identify, as was previously pointed out, five useful categories for those five, of which three is average. And keeping in mind the fact that we're looking at kids that are all within the 90th percentile. But three is the average score because the purpose of the event, scoffing from the board aside, the purpose of the event is to identify within that 90th percentile group of brilliant kids, what are, what are the 130 that we're going to pick? That's, that's, that's what you have to figure out. And I refuse to believe that we're incapable of coming up with a system that can do that. I mean, how many colleges are in there in the country? And they have thousands of applicants every year and they've got a process. And all of them are imperfect. We can guarantee that. They are all imperfect and they will all make mistakes. Nothing you can do about that. But you need a system that people can read, identify and go, okay, we've got a process and we're applying it fairly. My only other confusion point here is on slide 15. I don't think I understand why you eliminated those questions. Again, kind of along the lines of there's no perfect process, but at least these questions gave you a framework within which other people can read and go, okay, I can see something. But you didn't replace it with anything. So now it kind of appears that, I mean, you said it before and I know you're spot on with this. You're looking at the, at a holistic approach. You're not trying to, there's no one thing, and you even said it in here specifically somewhere, none, none of this can be based on one assessment point. And that makes perfect sense. Totally agree with that. That's why you have a group of people who are familiar with this process going through this. You've given them a framework within these questions on slide 15, within which to work and base their decisions on. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm not sure these are the three perfect questions, but I do think you need something that provides them a framework within which they select. And then the process kind of identifies what your goals are for ODS in general. You know, because for example, when you, when you remove the phrase, "the top candidates will be invited to attend," this makes me wonder, I mean, granted that I understand exactly what you said a minute ago when you said, hey, when we're talking about the other grades other than two and six, it's a little more difficult. But you're still trying to identify at least the highest category from which, whether it's random selection or, or something else, to pick those people. But what's the purpose of ODS? Removing that statement kind of makes me wonder. Which, which brings me back to something somebody else said a minute ago, is we've got a bigger problem here to, to talk about, which is what do we do with the entirety of our gifted program? I think the gifted cluster is probably what we need to look at. I'm not sure that's the best way to go. I think dedicated gifted classes in, in all or most of our schools is probably more appropriate. So within that framework, then again, so what's the purpose of ODS if we do have dedicated gifted in, in our other schools? Like, we've got a lot to tackle here, I think. And the first one simply is, how do we deal with next year? So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Ms. Manny. I know that Dr. Robertson wants to speak after you do.
Okay. So Ms. Weems had said what I had written down, "the top candidates will be considered based upon available space." So that's kind of what, what Ms. Owen's concern was, that could be some compromising language on, I think it was page six. And the, I guess I'm a little confused, Ms. Franklin, on the, I, I didn't quite catch what you said that the Gifted Advisory Committee supported. Was that taking out the parental input portion? Is that what you were referring to?
No, I was referring to the fact that at the time when we instituted, when, when we made the change, that we would essentially put in an application automatically for any student identified in the 90th percentile.
Okay.
That is what was the change, where the change was made and supported by the committee.
Okay. And when was that?
I'm sorry?
When was that?
Oh, gosh. I'd have to go back to my workshops, but.
But it wasn't in the recent meetings?
I mean, it's been since I've been on the board. Let's put it that way, yeah.
Right. But like the last couple of months?
Not last couple of months. I mean, this happened.
Okay.
Yeah, earlier.
I mean, I support taking out the parental input part. I mean, we've had a lot of discussions about that because, I mean, I know I would have never qualified to go to ODS because my parents wouldn't have been able to complete the forms. But I think that for me, it's just about, I want to seek consent from the parents. I don't want to make it hard for the parents, but I want their consent, right? Because I know what happens to opt-out forms. Opt-out forms don't always get to the, to the parents. And that's my, that's my big issue with the opt-out forms is because it says consent. If those opt-out forms don't get to the parents, then they don't, they haven't given consent. So that's just my follow-up. Thank you.
Dr. Robertson.
Well, first of all, let me just thank all of you for the thoughtful input you've provided tonight. And I would make a suggestion for consideration. Clearly, we've got two issues here. We've got one issue that we're time-bound on, and that is we have the kids coming in to school in two weeks. We do have a little bit of time to get this next school year right. Clearly, you've given us some really good feedback and some, and some input on considerations around the rating scale, around individual scores versus, versus consensus, around percentage base. So I would like a little bit of time for us to go back with the team and talk about those particular solutions we can develop right now for implementation for this year. And then you've also brought forward some bigger questions that we can grapple with over the next several months, and that is the purpose of ODS. How do we address the fact that it is our contention that we will continue to get more kids demonstrating gifted, intellectual giftedness than the seats available at ODS? And I think that goes back to this board's decision several years ago to do full-day kindergarten across the board for all kids. And also the fact that you've continued to support an expansion of pre-K and, and early, early discoveries and all of those things that are paying dividends to us right now. So if the board is agreeable, you know, I can debrief with the, the team tomorrow morning. We have agenda planning at noon tomorrow and we can discuss what is the right time to bring back our next iteration of solutions for this immediate school year. And at that point, we can get a definitive timeline on, okay, how far can we back this thing up before we have to make a decision? So I would make that. So I would make that ask of this board.
Dr. Robertson, I'd also suggest, because we've not had the conversation, we've only talked about what I would consider about half the issues involved in gifted. And if you read the regulations on there, and for those of you who've been on the board for a while, you know you've had some of these experts in. You know the, the complaints we've had over the years. A lot of it deals with the ability, your requirements to identify students who might not otherwise be identified, disadvantaged students, the issues on race, second language, disabilities, issues. Some of the things you're suggesting might have adverse impact on some of these groups. And you've been briefed on it, for those who've been on the board, when you had your experts in the last two summers, explaining to you why some of these recommendations were made. You may want to look at that information again to be careful about some of the decisions you're making. Having served the school board for over 25 years, I have been involved in every single one of these suits with the U.S. Department of Education. I know why we do some of the things we do because we've entered into consent agreements from them. So I want to remind you, be careful about some of the decisions you make. And you may not remember why you've implemented some of these. So let's pull back out those reports so that you're looking at. I don't want you to make a decision that is going to have a disparate impact on numbers and trip us right into another complaint or a lawsuit. So we need to be careful about them. So you may want to review some of these statistics that we have and what the impact is on these programs and why we're doing what we're doing. So those are some of the issues that, which is not something we've discussed so far in this conversation. And since we have a lot of new members on, you may not have been here when we had these discussions. We need to pull out that information again for you.
And Ms., Madam Chair, if I could share on top of that, the process we've used the last two years to identify the kids to attend ODS has not adjusted what the student population looks like. It's had zero impact on it, so.
Thank you for sharing that. Yeah, I do know that from just discussion this with Ms. Lynetti and Dr. Kelly. So thank you for sharing that. I think that's important that you point that out. Ms. Melnick.
And Dr. Kelly, any language that states that a child's needs cannot be met in their regular classroom, because if we did not have an ODS school, of course, we would be meeting the needs of all of our children in our schools. And, you know, if you remember when this all started, because I was here, it, the program was a, a one-day-a-week program for our, for our incredibly exceptional students who went once a week. And it was actually, if you were here and you lived it, it was a tough, it was a tough thing to do because it means they meant a, they missed a day of school and they were still responsible for the work that they missed when they were at the gifted program. And so I, I really struggle with that language. I don't want to see that in any, in any of our stuff, that our needs cannot be met in our schools because it diminishes what we do every day in our schools for all of our children. And it's why I mentioned also how our numbers in special education have grown exponentially and how we meet the needs of our special education population too. And I'm, I'm, I'm quite sensitive about this topic. And I, you know, clearly every year we have disappointed families. Clearly. And that's going to be in everything that we do in life. Something is going to disappoint us along the way. And so I'll stop there.
Okay. Some great input there from all, all of you. Thank you for sharing that. I have all the same concerns. I felt like just to say them over again would just be extra rhetoric. That doesn't need to be there. But I will say that. I do agree with many of the things said tonight, so. Okay, so no more questions. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Culheffer as well, because he was here, just in case.
Yes. Thank you too, Mr. Culpepper. And so that brings us to our next agenda item for, under information B, resolution, model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity and respect for all students and parents of Virginia Beach City, Virginia Beach's public schools. Ms. Lynetti, are you, who's presenting that? It's Ms.
It's Mrs. Manning's.
Mrs. Manning, are you presenting that?
Sure.
Okay.
So everyone has a copy of it. It's in the agenda packet as well for the public to see. So in 2021, the school board approved a policy 5-7 that directed the superintendent to develop regulations, practices and trainings related to compliance of the Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3. That is the law that directs the creation of the model policies by the Virginia Department of Education. So I, I felt that when those regulations, the model policies were changed, that this policy would cover that, that this policy, that the superintendent would have gone ahead and implemented the model policies that have been handed down to us from the state. That didn't happen. We are in a transition of our superintendent's seat right now. And so that hasn't happened. And I felt that a resolution from this board was appropriate to direct the superintendent to implement the policy as directed under, to implement the regulations and the model policies as directed under policy 5-7. That's essentially what this resolution states. And the model policies that are attached to it are exactly as written in the 2023 approved policies that we were provided. And one change, when, when I created this, I thought it was going to be on for action tonight. So that's why it states August 21st, 2023. So I would be happy to adjust to that since we won't be voting on this until August 22nd, so.
Yes, we're going to follow our normal procedure with information first and then go on to action at the next meeting or whenever we feel we need to do that. So, thank you. So do we have anyone that, do we, do we need to read this maybe? Or, I mean, it's up there for everybody to read. So do we just want to speak, speak to it and ask, is there anybody that wants to discuss it? Let's just discuss it. I think we all can read it. It's up. I think it's been out. It's been on our agenda.
I'll be happy to read the resolution if you want.
Do we want, you want to read it? Okay. Go ahead and read it, Ms. Manning.
Whereas policy 5-7 of the school board of the City of Virginia Beach here and after school board directs the superintendent or designee to develop regulations, practices and trainings related to the compliance with Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3 as amended. Whereas on September 18th, 2021, the superintendent of Virginia Beach City Public Schools here and after VBCPS adopted regulation 5-7.1 in compliance with 22, Code 22.1-23.3 and the 2021 model policies for the treatment of transgender students in Virginia's public schools. Whereas on July 18th, 2023, the Virginia Department of Education released the model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity and respect for all students and parents in Virginia's public schools that align with statutory provisions of Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3 as amended. Whereas with the adoption of the 2023 model policies, the VDOE has withdrawn the 2021 model policies, which have no further force and effect. And now therefore be it resolved, the school board directs the superintendent or designee to replace the entire current regulation 5-7.1 with the 2023 model policies for Virginia Beach City Public Schools document attached to this resolution without modification, no later than, and this is where I would change the date, it currently says August 21st, 2023. And be it further resolved, the school board directs the superintendent or designee to modify regulation 5-44.2 to be in compliance with the 23, 2023 model policies. Further resolved, that no future changes are to be made to regulation 5-7.1 without school board approval by majority vote. And be it further resolved, this resolution will supersede any other past resolutions adopted by the school board pertaining to this matter. And be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any questions? Ms. Melnick and then Ms. Anderson.
So I think it's important to remember that when Governor Northam dropped his model policies, this board did not adopt those policies in totality. And with the new model policy guidelines, I think based on our very lengthy, formal, written opinion from our attorney, I concluded that some of that, some of, some of the model policies are fine. But there are some portions of those model policies that have brought our attorney great pause. And she questions the legality of them. And I take, I took that written, formal opinion very seriously. And I think as a board, just pragmatically, just logically, we need to take those portions in question out. And they need to be sent to the policy review committee for review. I mean, we could, we could argue this tonight at nauseam. But the truth is, we, we all know, we've been given a formal written opinion. And I think we need to follow that. I think that's what's most fair to our community. And let the policy review committee review it and bring back some suggestion to this board. Where then there can be some meaty discussion in conjunction with our attorney, where she can advise us on the legal, the legal ramifications that exist and that have brought her pause. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anderson?
I agree with Ms. Melnick. Some of the model policies I, I don't have a problem with. But some of them, we've been told by legal counsel, do conflict with human, Virginia human rights. Is that what it's called, Virginia human? I think you had that in here and I don't have it in front of me, but. So I do believe that there are some things that we can adjust. And as was pointed out, the, the, the policies that we had under Gov, Governor Northam, we did not, we did not, we did not adopt all of those exactly as they were written. And, and it's, it's up to us if we can pick and choose. The, the main thing that I have a problem with has to do with, in this particular resolution, has to do with the fact that it, we're supposed to, you know, just adopt the model policies as they're written. But I believe as they're written with, with the problems, the main problem that I have with the way their, the model policies are written is that I worry about what it, what it's going to do to our teachers. And it was pointed out several times tonight that this is going to cause some problems with, you know, what our teachers can and can't do. And I believe there are some modifications that we can come up with. Namely, we've had workshops where we've had people come to us and talk to about, to us about how, how counselors can be utilized. And I do believe that we can utilize some of those, some of those policies and, and regulations that we have so that in the future, we're not going to put the burden solely on the teachers. And I worry about how that, how that's going to affect teachers and how they develop relationships with their students. So I, I feel like as this, as this resolution is written, I'm not ready to adopt 100% the way the 2023 policies are written. And for that reason, I, I can't support this as it's written. But, but I'm not saying that we won't make some attempt to, to utilize some of these, the 2023 model policies as long as we have protections for our teachers in there. I really am concerned about how that will affect that and what the teachers are going to be expected to do. I certainly don't want any teacher fired over the fact that they may or may not have called parents over something that, that they suspect about a student. I don't want a student to be put out on the street. I don't want a student to be verbally abused at home over something where, in my opinion, a parent should be the first to know. And if a parent has a relationship with their child, they should be the first to know if a child is questioning their gender, gender identity. So I don't want to put a teacher in a place of, of having to call a parent and say, well, I suspect that your child is transgender or I suspect that your child is gay and wants, you know, whatever. I don't, I don't want to put a teacher in that, that aspect. So I believe that we can utilize our counselors to help, help our teachers and staff. But anyway, like I said, there are some aspects of this that we can adopt and some aspects of the policies that, that we might choose to ignore. Just like we chose to ignore some of the policies that Governor Northam passed down. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
So I've already apologized to Dr. Robertson for sending over 30 questions about how these policies could be implemented. I have grave concerns. I, I see this as an unfunded mandate. It grants every student the right to use a single-person restroom. Every single student in a 2,200-student high school could opt in to that restroom choice. The line would be 10 hours long if each student took three minutes each. There's other operational issues such as when can we unlock a single-person restroom? How much time must pass? How many staff must be present? Because you might end up unlocking the door with the student partially undressed. You might have to unlock the door in a medical emergency. I'm also concerned that the policy doesn't recognize the acquisition of sovereignty during adolescence where other parts of Virginia state code do. So for instance, state code 16.1-338 says that minors aged 14 or older must consent to surgery. An adult cannot force their 14-year-old or older child to have surgery against their will. Code 54.12969 says that a minor shall be deemed an adult for the purpose of consenting to medical or health services needed to determine the presence, the presence or to treat VD or any infectious or contagious disease that the State Board of Health requires to be reported, medical health services related to reproductive health, medical or health services needed in the case of outpatient care, treatment or rehab for substance abuse, medical or health services needed in the case of outpatient care, treatment or rehab for mental illness or emotional disturbance. And it goes through a number of other things where a minor shall be deemed an adult for the purpose of. And then we take a look at the Virginia Human Rights Act 2.23900, which specifically says it will safeguard all individuals, it doesn't say just adults, from unlawful discrimination because of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, pregnancy, childbirth or related medical conditions, age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender, identity, military status or disability, and places of public accommodation, including educational institutions. So I think that we need the policy review committee, along with our attorney, to work through some of these issues. But what I really want to speak to right now is as a parent of a VBCPS student. And I take exception to the policy where it says that the schools must keep parents fully informed about the student's physical health, mental health and psychological well-being. Because to me, that invites all of you into my family room. Because in order for the school to be fully informed, they're going to have to get fully informed. They're going to ask my son questions that maybe I don't want them to ask. This policy gives the schools the right to become fully informed about your child's mental health, psychological well-being, and physical health, which means they'll be asking our children probing questions about what happens in their relationships, what happens at home. I know some of us have objected to some of the questions in surveys that our children get. This opens that door even wider. This is a privacy issue. This policy went from parental rights all the way to big government oversight. That section in particular really concerns me as a parent. Y'all don't need to know everything that goes on in my house. But that policy makes it possible. And I need us to think about that. I'm a private individual. I don't need schools asking my son a lot of questions about his life so they can fully inform me. That's my job. That's my job. So what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see the Policy Review Committee really take a look at these model policies. The thing is, with the model policy, it gives us the flexibility to massage it, to pick what works best for our school system, for the 63,000 students that are in our school system. What works here doesn't necessarily work on Tangier Island where I was last week. So model policies are not law. They haven't been passed by the General Assembly. We don't have to adopt them. But I think we should take a look at them and see what works for our school system, see what works for our students, and see what works for our parents. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Manning? Oh, Ms. Williams, you want to go first? Ms. Williams had put her, and then you, okay.
Thank you. May I ask Dr. Robertson a question, Chair? I'd like to direct this to Dr. Robertson.
Yes.
Okay. Hello? Yeah, okay. Dr. Robertson, could you and/or your staff implement these policies?
So I guess I would say, first off, I want everyone to know that there is a path forward here and a path that will meet this board and this division's commitment to providing a safe and welcoming learning environment for all of our students, while at the same time abiding by the requirements as stated in the Code of Virginia. We recognize that whatever path forward we choose, some will be concerned about what these decisions mean to them and their experiences in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. My team and I have had a lot of conversations about this over the last couple of weeks. And we're prepared to implement whatever changes are adopted by this board in a manner where everyone will feel seen and heard in such a way that brings them understanding, acceptance, and comfort. We will do this by establishing clear guidance in the form of regulations and guidelines, by providing training, by meeting with students, staff, or parents when they have additional concerns, and by ensuring division policies, the Code of Student Conduct and discipline guidelines as they relate to student safety or enforced. In short, our staff are comprised of caring professionals. And we will implement whatever is brought forward in a professional manner. So to answer your question, there is a path forward. It's still yet to be determined because we really need some guidance from this board as to what you want us to do. But we believe, we're confident that we can make this work.
Okay, so I'm hearing that you're confident that you can make this work if you don't change anything. You're confident if we direct you with some changes. You're confident if we direct you with a lot of changes. You're confident that you'll make whatever we bring forward to you, changes or no changes to the model policies. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Manning?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just have a couple of questions for our legal counsel. So it's been stated up here that there are some potential issues with the Virginia Human Rights Act. I emailed you a link. I'm sure you've already looked at it many times. But my question is, under the Virginia Human Rights Act, on Code 2.2-3904, it's titled "Nondiscrimination in Places of Public Accommodation." Is that the part of the Virginia Human Rights Act that would govern schools?
It goes on to say about educational institutions. But yes, she would be covered by that.
Under the 2.2-3904?
Yes, I believe so.
It says, "Place of public accommodation means all places or businesses offering or holding out to the general public goods, services, privileges, facilities, advantages, or accommodations."
I don't have it in front of me, but it does go on to talk about educational institutions.
Okay. And then my next question, so if, yeah, if you can, I don't see educational institutions under this one. So if you could maybe share that with me, which part governs the, under the Human Rights Act? Does the school board have sovereign immunity related to the Virginia Human Rights Act?
I don't think that's the right question. Sovereign immunity is generally a liability standard on there. So I'm not sure you're asking it correctly. Are you required to comply with the Virginia Human Rights Act?
So if someone were to sue the school board, would we have, under the Virginia Human Rights Act, would we have sovereign immunity?
Again, it's not that easy a question. It depends on how you plead it and what you're arguing. So the question, did you comply with it? And what is the injury that resulted from it?
So it's my understanding that sovereign immunity is given to government organizations in our state, unless a law specifies and waives that sovereign immunity. Is that accurate?
That's, I don't think that's the best explanation of sovereign immunity. The question is, were you directed to do something? And did you comply with that law? We'd have to look at it more.
I'm referring sovereign immunity in that we are immune from prosecution under a certain law.
I don't think that's the right explanation for sovereign immunity in these circumstances.
Okay, there was a court case in June in Norfolk where a school was...
With all due respect, Mrs. Manning, I'd be more than happy to provide this legal opinion to you in closed session. I don't think it's appropriate for me to provide you legal advice in this setting. I think if the board wants to hear a legal opinion, I'd be happy to do that in closed session.
Okay, well, Ms. Anderson brought up the Virginia Human Rights Act, and so I...
You're asking me for an interpretation of your liability and your interpretation of case liability. That's something that would be more appropriate for me to provide to you in a closed session, which I'd be happy to do. But I don't believe it's appropriate for me to discuss liability without specific facts. And I'd prefer to do that in a closed session.
Okay, Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. I do have a question for Ms. Lanetti. Just, and I'm not going to ask you legal advice, other than, you had provided a very extensive and thoughtful analysis. And I guess my question is, I've got several questions, as maybe some board members do, because you went through so much of this. And I'm not an attorney. And I do have some questions about, because we have some things that, in your opinion, comply and some don't, right? How do we have this discussion with you in regards to getting these kind of... Is the proper venue to go through PRC? I just would like some direction. And I still have another question outside of that, so.
If you're asking for liability, what is potential liability? Where, how would somebody sue you? I think that is something... Right, if you're asking me to draft a policy that's compliant, that's a different issue.
No, 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 I'm sorry, that's not what I'm asking. How do I have, or we as a board, have this discussion with you to go through some of your consideration for different parts of the policy? How, should we send you questions? I mean, how do, do we have to have individual conversations? Because there's a lot here that I feel like I need to have clarification on to understand before I could make a vote in regards to some of the legal, you know, concerns that you had addressed. So I feel a little bit like we're putting the cart before the horse because I do have questions. And for me to vote, I need more information, I guess. So what is the next step?
I think your question on the floor is, you have a resolution that says, "Adopt the model policies exactly as put out by VDOE." So that's the question you're looking at at the moment. When the Northam administration put out the 2021 guidelines, we did not do one policy because it didn't make sense for us. We don't have everything in one policy. So we have a regulation that, we added a regulation on restrooms. On there, we have policies on student records. We amended the dress code. We have it in different places on there. So I have some concern about doing one policy because if you adopted one policy, we've got to go back and change a bunch of regulations and policies that already have some of this information. So we kind of have to coordinate it. It didn't make sense with the Northam administration to do one policy. We spread it out, which I believe we complied with that. As I pointed out in my legal opinion, there is a considerable amount of this. You are complying. You don't really need to do anything, or you just tweak it. That, I don't think, is a problem for it. There are a couple areas that you don't have policies that deal with what is here. Or your other problem is, you have a resolution that you put out on June 13th that said you will not amend policies and regulations, bylaws, that would violate certain things, which one of those acts is the Virginia Human Rights Act on there. So we have to kind of look at some of those things that might potentially violate it. Because what do you do about your resolution that you adopt on June 13th versus... If you were to adopt this resolution, it looks like it would withdraw your June 13th resolution, which means then you would implement. But then you have to implement the model policies, which means if you immediately do the model policies, I still have a bunch of regulations and policies where we spread it out before. So we have to, we would have competing policies and regulations that we'd also have to work in. So those are a couple of things we have to look at.
Right, well, exactly. So that then leads, again, to my question, is how do we have this discussion to ensure that we are addressing the concerns that you've brought forward and concerns that the board might have? Is, how can we appropriately have that discussion to be able to move forward with, not even just a vote on the resolution right now, but just a vote on, you know, the policy in general? So one of the things that I just kind of wanted to address as well is, today, we received feedback about teacher time, right? We've received, we all received an email based on our retreat. And so, you know, we already know, based on the conversations we've had with teachers at the retreat, that we have situations where they're already not given enough time to complete all the things that they have to complete now. And so I just want to make sure that, again, as we go through this and we look at how this is going to impact every part of how we move forward from here, I want to understand how your recommendations, how some of the questions that this board has presented, how are we going to get that completed and answered and brought forward, in your opinion?
In my opinion, you need to give some direction right now. Because we can draft this in multiple ways. You need to tell the school administration what you are willing, what are you willing to accept and not accept out there? And then you also, obviously, you've not adopted this resolution, which means what does that June 13th resolution mean? How are you interpreting that June 13th resolution? If that is going to stay in place, that's going to direct how we do this. Because it means I'm going to have to tell you some things you may or may not be able to amend because that June 13th resolution, you said, "We will not violate, we will not amend our policies to violate that." So what some of my opinion brought to you was trying to point out where you will or may not... Not necessarily, again, you'd have to look at the individual one. So that would come back. So one, you've got to figure out, what does that June 13th resolution mean? Is that standing and how we interpret that? You can also say, "We do or don't want your administration to do this." And I can work with the administration to figure out how we can bring back an implementing plan, if regulations on there. And again, I think my opinion detailed for you where I thought each policy and regulation was, so we could come back. But you need to, one, you have to decide, what does that June 13th resolution mean to you? Two, what do you want? What are you willing to live with or not live with in these 2023 model policies? So that we can figure out what to bring back to you.
Maybe I'm not clarifying my question. Do we go from here to PRC? Do we go from here to closed session? Do we go from here to open session? What is your opinion about where we move forward from here? Because I quite frankly, still feel like there's a discussion to be had. And I, so I'm just...
You can direct us, the school administration and I, to bring forth those policies and regulations that we think meet the requirements of the 2023 policies and bring them to you. Or the small, some of them I pointed out, sometimes there's just some small tweaks. We can bring that forward, and PRC could look at that. And then we would have to, you'd have to direct us what you want to do with those that we don't believe are compliant. How could we make them compliant? Where are the problems? What would it, but that's a problem. You need to decide what's an absolute yes or no for you. And then that helps us out. Or you can say to us, "School administration, school legal counsel, those policies or regulations that may potentially violate one of these laws, what can you do, what can you suggest to us?" And we can bring that back to PRC. We can bring them back directing to you. I don't know if you know tonight what you're willing to do. My ongoing problem is, what did you mean by your June 13th resolution? If you said you will not amend these policies, are you holding to that? Or do you want us to find a way to take those policies, regulations that might be inconsistent and...
I believe in the June 13th policy, we did have "as amended" behind it, some of the verbiage as well. There was, you know, when, I don't have the policy, the resolution in front of me. But there was an "as amended." So I feel like whatever, as we decide to amend. But I still have lots of questions about how we have to move forward. Because again, you have such a very thorough legal opinion. And I appreciate the time that you put into that. But now, not being an attorney, I really have lots of questions that were presented because of a legal opinion. So...
I have to just step in here because it's just going over and over again.
No, I know, and I'm sorry.
And I understand what you're asking. I think all of us do. There's questions that your legal opinion, that your written legal opinion has presented to all of us. And we want to know how to get them answered. Like you were just saying, you couldn't answer some things because of litigation. So these, hence, I guess that's why, two weeks ago, we really wanted to go into a closed session because you knew whatever you said was going to bring more questions. And it was just about questions and just giving us the answers to these questions, not making any decisions, not votes, but just giving us your legal opinion. And your legal opinion that you wrote made more questions in our mind that we want to ask. And so I think that's what needs to happen. I guess maybe in the PRC, if everybody goes to PRC, I don't know. But anyway, I think that's what you're saying.
I mean, if you want to, you could say, those policies that we believe are compliant, let's bring them forward. Or those that are easy to tweak, bring those forward. Now, the ones that I would consider a problem, I might want to be in closed session with you about, or I might want to work with the school administration, is the way we can write this that we think is going to comply with what you're looking at. What you really, again, have to consider is, is your June 13th, by your June 13th resolution, are you saying you will not? If we determine that this will violate one of those laws that are cited in that resolution, you don't want to go forward? Or do you want to amend that resolution? Because that's kind of directing where you're going. That's my hesitation. If you didn't have the June 13th resolution, then we were talking today about what to do. But you have the June 13th resolution, which says you're not going to make amendments to that. So, I mean, it's your resolution. You do what you want with it. But you kind of have to give us a little bit of guidance where you want to go.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Okay. So I mean, I have some of those concerns. You know, resolutions say what they say. And so that's why I had trouble with paragraph 10 and 11. But anyway, the model policies that were released say, "Each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with, but may be more comprehensive..." policies that are consistent with, but may be more comprehensive than the model policies developed by the Department of Education pursuant to subsection A. Doesn't say pick and choose which parts you like. So I just wanted to point my colleagues to that language. I fully believe that the Virginia Department of Education probably has some attorneys that have reviewed this prior to its release. I don't think that that probably came to us on a whim in the year that it took. It says in there that it takes effect July 19th. So I do not believe that we are currently in compliance with those. I did hear a lot of discussion about the teachers and there was a lot of stuff that the policies don't actually contain as arguments against them instead of what's in it. But, you know, and a lot of you know this, some of you don't, and maybe some people don't care, but I did track my district just last year and I knocked well over 5,000 doors. The vast majority of my district wanted to be fully informed when it comes to issues relating to their children, their families. The vast majority of my district did not believe that schools belong taking over the role of parents. I'm also a parent of three children in this division. I have concerns with our division's existing regulations. Our existing policy 5-7 has been discussed, says the superintendent or designee is directed to develop regulations, practices and trainings related to compliance with the Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3 as amended in the Virginia Department of Education model policies for treatment of transgender and public elementary and secondary students. The truth is, we just aren't following that right now. And so I, there's nothing in there saying that the teachers are going to police the halls, pick up the phone, call the parents. Even Parent View has a section that says nicknames. We can enter it in as parents. It's, it's, it's right there in this energy. There are roughly 65,000 students in our division and right now, the practice is to deny each and every family the rights to information about their children on the basis that they may be abusive. This is a practice that I feel criminalizes families for a crime that has not been committed. There's no due process there. Is every parent of a student that identifies as transgender and non-binary assumed to be guilty of physical abuse? It's my belief that the vast majority of parents are very loving parents, doing the best they can every single day to provide the best life possible for their children, usually better than the life that they had. That's, that's what most people want for their kids. And if they aren't and those children are being abused, we have a process for that and our teachers and staff are mandatory reporters and that process will be followed. UCLA peer-reviewed study shows nine percent on average of adolescents are suicidal and have attempted suicide. That number does jump to 40% for transgender youth, according to the National Institute of Health. And I'm not going to be the school board member that votes against something that gives the parents the information that could have prevented their child from committing suicide. I'm not going to sit here. I'm not going to be the one to take that call. So I err on the side of parents having the information they need because with these numbers, I want parents in the know. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, over the last couple of months, we've, we've had topics that have required a lot of legal questions and it has become the practice of this board to ask our attorney legal questions during open meetings and getting those answers. Specifically during the conversations on sexually explicit materials, we were asking our attorney questions and she was giving us legal, her, her legal advice here in our open meetings, in fact, saying what we could be sued for, what we couldn't be sued for. I just asked some similar types of questions and our attorney is telling me now that she can't answer my questions. So I do have a big concern over picking and choosing when we're going to be getting answers from our legal counsel and when we're not. So I think that that's something that we need to have a discussion about. I have spoken with five different attorneys on the topic of the model policies who are very well versed in the model policies. And they have all told me that their legal opinion is that they are very much legally sound and that they are not in violation of the Virginia Human Rights Act. So that, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to ask some follow-up questions of our attorney. And even though we've been able to do it on past subjects, I'm very concerned that we're not able to get any answers from the dais now that the public deserves to hear. We represent the public out here and, and they should be able to hear what legal counsel says as well. So I would like for us to, you know, anyone else that has discussion on this, but I would like for us to just move forward. And this resolution addresses Ms. Lynetti's concern about previous resolutions. So if we did pass this, it would address those concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper.
Thank you. I just wanted to first point out that this comment that's in the preamble of the model policy, which says schools shall keep parents fully informed about all matters. They may be reasonably expected to be important to a parent. That line is not some, you know, broad authority for schools to go digging into stuff, nor is intended for that. It's under the, under the paragraph, schools shall keep parents informed about their children's well-being, which is under the guiding principle, parents have the right to make decisions with respect to their children. That is intended to point out that schools may not withhold pertinent information from parents. And that's, and that line also does not exist at all anywhere in our, in the model policy that's, that's here. There's more specific language in there about not withholding information from parents, which to me is the core of this model policy. Very simply put, in my mind, it is atrocious to consider the idea of a government policy that mandates a lie. The problem we have here and the reason this is before us here today is because these model policies have been out and there's no indication that any action is being taken on them. If there is, I'm just not aware of it. And that's why, that's why this is before us. There are two important factors here. First off is that the 2021 policies are no longer in effect. And there are, there are regulations and policies in place that, now, policies are going to take some time because we've got to actually go over those, but the regulations the superintendent can begin to take action on immediately. Additionally, within these model policies, there's language in here several times where it says to comply with state and federal law. I'm fully certain that both superintendent, our attorney and this board doesn't want to violate state or federal law. And I'm confident in the superintendent's ability and his staff's, with his staff's guidance to implement these policies and regulation, which he has, which he has authority over within those guidelines. And this, this resolution would give him the guidance to begin doing that. And as Ms. Lynetti pointed out a minute ago, starting to pull out the policies that apply, the changes made within the state's guidance, that's a process that'll take some time, but we need to begin. Thank you.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Want to, I guess, start with, has the chair had any conversations, I guess, with legal counsel and/or the superintendent in regards to an estimated dollar amount expected if we were to adopt everything in the policy in full without any modifications?
No, I have, I haven't been given that. I have asked one specific question of our superintendent and that was the one about the restrooms. Did we have that in place? And he said that yes, we do have that in place at every school.
And so in terms?
That's the only question I've asked or heard of.
Okay. So in terms of the single-use restrooms available in every school, are we referring to the clinic or are there alternate single-use restrooms already in every single school?
Well, I asked about were these former like employee or staff restrooms? And so I'm going to let Dr. Robertson.
I see, Dr. Freeman also.
So.
Answer that, okay?
Ms. Martin sent a, a number of questions a couple of weeks ago. I now have all of the answers and, but I will let Mr. Freeman ask, answer the question about the single-use restrooms.
Thank you.
For that question specifically, over the course of last year, we ensured that all of our secondary schools had a single-use bathroom that was available for students and staff to be able to use. So there's at least one in all of our secondary schools.
And so one for all of the students in secondary schools and in elementary schools?
There are a number of them throughout there. So when I say at least one, there's more than one and many, and our elementary schools have many single-use bathrooms available.
Okay. So we have the one.
And that's in addition to clinics, to your point. That's a, the design was so that it, you didn't have to, that you could use it relatively discreetly.
Okay. And with our current bathroom processes, we've talked about them before with the hall pass electronically, are we able to utilize the, the single-use stall for any student who would want to through the hall pass process in a way that would allow for students to have appropriate restroom use?
So I think a lot of the implementation of this plan is going to be, to be determined on how the kids respond to the options on restroom use. I don't think I could definitively tell you right now that it's not going to be a problem or it's going to be a huge problem. I can give you some, what my personal feelings are after talking with the team, but even that wouldn't be based in any data or evidence. It would be based on assumptions. So that remains to be seen.
So if our students chose to all opt for that, we may or may not have an issue if they made that decision to want to all utilize that.
Ms. Owens, I will point out that regulation 544.1 has allowed that we implemented that as a result of the 2021, that you, upon request, could have single-user bathrooms. So that option's been available to us. So we've had that. I just don't know that, the difference with the 2023 regulations are going to be having to have an opt-out. A parent is going to tell, could tell the school, I only want my student using this, which creates, that, that might create a different situation. So far, you've had the option to use that. It's always been available. We've always had those accommodations available to anybody requested. We formalized that in a regulation in 2021. The difference now would be we don't have a procedure in place to document that this parent wants this student to use that. So that's something we would have to, so I don't, that might create more of a demand than we've had or a requirement to use it. So that's something we haven't dealt with before. So that's something we don't, we don't know how to anticipate at the moment.
Okay. But a process that you anticipate would be able to occur within our current structures, our current systems for documentation, for reaching out, all of that? We wouldn't need to upgrade any of our hall pass systems or anything like that, what you're saying?
I don't think so at this particular point.
Okay. And then in regards to an implementation, Dr. Robertson spoke about making sure that there was clear guidance and regulation and a path forward and training provided to staff members. Do you have an idea, an estimate? And I know it would be contingent upon the direction given from the board, but say the policy moving forward with no modifications, what kind of a timeframe that would take to come up with the clear guidance, regulation, and then implement the training to all staff?
So there has been some conversations occurring over the last couple of weeks in anticipation of what could be coming forward. We've got teacher in-service week in two weeks, which gives us a good opportunity to address some of the issues. Ms. Lynetti has already taken a look at some of our existing regulations and practices and identified areas that we would update. We, I have had personal conversations with members of senior staff and their direct reports that would be overseeing groups like, say, counselors, for example, or principals or assistant principals or teacher training. So we've had the conversations. What I have not been able to tell them at this point is this is, here are your marching orders and now you've got to get going. So, because really, I need some, I need some board guidance here.
Sure. It doesn't sound like the board is going to be able to give direction before the teacher in-service week if we're not even going to vote on this until the next meeting at best. Is that correct? So then we'd be looking at some other training time that would need to be required for teachers?
That's correct.
Okay.
I will note, whether you give them guidance or not, the current regulation allows a student or a parent to say, I want to use a single-user bath and we have them available. So that, that right's not going to be denied to you. It's been available.
Right. That, my other statement was for just the policy as a total, not just for the bathroom piece anymore. But the question was asked earlier about how the board feels about the previous resolution and that ultimately that's going to be part of what we have to decide. I can say that I feel comfortable that the board made a decision about not violating the Virginia Human Rights Act and I still feel comfortable about that commitment. Ultimately, the board will vote and speaks as a group, not as a single person. But if there was a question about where individuals stand, I feel comfortable not violating the Virginia Human Rights Act. In terms of Ms. Lynetti providing us with guidance, I appreciate her expertise on this topic and other topics. Now, Ms. Manning pointed out the previous topic about definition of sexually explicit when we were working with that. And at that time, there were questions about having the word homosexuality as part of the definition of sexually explicit. And I know that that was a point of questioning when we provided guidance from you. And I appreciate that because I noted that just this week, that definition has been changed at the state level. Bipartisan legislation passed that has removed the word homosexual, homosexuality from the definition of sexually explicit. And so while it took a year, apparently you were able to see that coming down the road, even though I would assume that attorneys had looked at it when it first came out. I appreciate, appreciate that our attorney was able to see, that piece might be a problem. And here we are a year later where that was changed. And so I do give a considerable amount of weight to our attorney's opinion, who we employ. I do have a lot of questions about what this would look like in individual implementation, like what the timeframe for a notification would be, how that notification would be documented so that we don't have a parent being called seven times that year because somebody at the ATC had notification that a child had gender questions and we had a teacher in first block at their homeschool and a coach somewhere else. How are we tracking this? If we are tracking it, are we now documenting a student's sexuality and, or gender identity or some other feature in our system? Who has access to see that? Are teachers supposed to go and talk to each other and say, I heard Johnny in my second block class came to talk to me and had some concerns, some questions about their gender? Let me talk to all the teachers to find out if somebody has already reported that or notified. And if they haven't, then that teacher has now outed this student to all other staff members. I have a lot of questions on what this is going to look like and I have faith that administration is going to consider all of these things. But I want it to happen in amount of time where those things can be considered and teachers are not just being put in situations where they're facing all of these additional tasks that they've already come to us and talked about how overwhelmed they are and how they're working on unpaid time. And so I, I look forward to us discussing where we are already in compliance and what other modifications would look like to make this realistic and reasonable for students and families alike. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin.
Okay. I'm just going to keep this brief, but it was brought up and I appreciate the reminder that each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with, but may, but may be more comprehensive than model policies developed by the Department of Education. I want you to, I want to remind you back in I want you to, I want to remind you back in 2021, for the ones, the board members that were here then, that that was also part of the 2021 policy. And we decided as a division, and I, quite frankly, I did not vote for that policy at the time, and because I had concerns about some of that policy. And so I just want to remind the new board, or let them know, since you weren't here, the new board members, that was also a part of the 2021 model policy as well. And we, as a division, then decided to pull some things out there that, you know, the majority of the board members at the time felt like were appropriate. Again, at the time, I did not vote for that policy, but exactly the reason I, I didn't vote for it then, I really felt like more discussion needed to be had. So I appreciate the board members bringing up some of their concerns, some of their feedback, and I think that is really important for us to be able to have discussions about this, so we can put together a policy that is appropriate for this division. So I appreciate the feedback and people bringing comments today, and I would very much love to hear some more feedback as well, because I feel like some of us have very similar questions, and I, I think it's important for us to basically be able to address all of those. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that also was part of the 2021 policy as well.
Ms. Anderson?
I, I do know that Ms. Martin sent several questions to Dr. Robertson, quite a few. And I saw those questions on your Facebook page. I didn't, however, see all the answers. Are you sending?
Yeah, so I'm sending, tomorrow morning, I'll put everything together and send it out. I had one more document that I received this evening, and I just haven't had a chance to put it together.
There, there were quite a few questions.
But you'll have all those answers.
Right, thank you. And, and are we able to, can you, could you say overall that you're able to address all those concerns, or were there some, some concerns that we can't do as a, as a division, or you couldn't give answers for because they were financial answers?
We did the very best we could at giving a specific answer to each of the questions. There were a couple of questions. We gave a general response, and we noted that.
Okay, I, I just think that that'll be helpful for all of us tomorrow. Thank you. So, so how, I, I just want to pose this. What happens if a, a teacher calls a parent and the parent is offended, and then, you know, snaps back at the teacher, "How dare you accuse my, my child of whatever?" And that could happen. It's happened in the past where, where teachers have, you know, called a parent over behavior and the parent didn't agree that, that that behavior was offensive. So that happens at times. I, I think one of the things that we have to be careful of is we have to make sure that we're protecting our teachers in every way. We don't want them falsely accusing, but we also, according to the governor, have to, the teacher's supposed to let parents know about every aspect of their child. And, and I think we're going to have to be, put the brakes on and take a look at this. And when we form regulations or policy concerning this, we need to be very careful that we are showing as much protection for our teachers as we possibly can. We don't want to put them into a vulnerable situation where, you know, they're, they could be sued. And even though I know teachers are protected in some ways over that, some teachers are more protected than others because they have more insurance for various reasons, but we need to make sure that we, we are protecting them and our staff. And, and I do, as I said earlier, I think we need to think about how we can utilize our, our counselors in this scenario. We've had some suggestions, I think Bobby Jamison gave, he, I was referring to that earlier. He gave us a workshop on some of the things that he's developed. And I believe some of those things that he's developed came through what we got in, from Governor Northam's 2021, you know, policies, because we felt the need to develop those things. And, and so, so I think we can utilize some of those, but I think we're going to, we need to, we need to slow down, and we need to pick and choose what is going to work for our division, as has been pointed out earlier this evening. So I hope, you know, we're able to come to some type of a consensus about this resolution and maybe make a few changes on it that, where it doesn't say that we adopt the policies. Maybe if we can make some, some consensus, come to a consensus where we don't, we don't adopt all the model policies, maybe we can reword that a little bit so that it says that we, that we try to comply with the model policies. But, because there's, there's some, there's definitely some tweaks that we need to make on this resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Weems?
Yes, and I think someone read we're supposed to be in compliance, July 19th. So, you know, we need, we, we do need to get on with it and give our superintendent direction, and I hear that, that we can do this if, if he has the marching orders to begin. We were asked by our legal counsel, what are we going to do with this? What are our thoughts about the resolution? My thoughts, and I said this when we voted, and I've heard it from several colleagues, we don't govern by resolution, and resolutions should not trump law, policies, our own policies, policies coming down from the governor, and regulations. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm in the queue, and I just wanted to say, we've got this on information. If we follow the protocol, it would come for a vote at the next meeting. I've heard many people say tonight, and, and also Dr. Robertson, that they need to be given the information of how to move forward with their regulations, their policies. I just asked Ms. Anderson, because they've got the, we have a Policy Review Committee meeting on Thursday. Is it on the agenda? Really think it needs to be on the agenda.
Madam Chair, this is not on the agenda for the Policy Review Committee.
Yeah, that's what she just said, and so I'm thinking that...
I will remind you, there's over 40 policies.
I know, I know, but I'm thinking that, I know it's, you know, two days before, but it's been pointed out that the teachers and everyone needs to know this information, and we need to move forward. So I think it pertinent to take some of those off if we have to. I don't know how long they are. Some of them go really quick, as we all know, who've been on PRC, and some of them are lengthy. This is one that's going to need to be discussed. I truly believe we, there's too many of us up here, and we can show of hands if we want, that's up to y'all, I don't know, that really feel like it needs to be discussed further and not just, okay, we're going to adopt all of this, as we did with the previous 2021 policy from the governor. It was discussed for, I mean, when did we start and when did we finally?
They, they became final in March 2021, but we, there was not a time period. We did not implement, we had most of it done, but for the school year, about September that year. So we had a couple of months to do some of that. So we had more time during that time period to adjust for it. So this, we have not developed it. I have looked at some of the regulations and policies that we would tweak on, but some of them we don't have, we've not dealt with before, so we would have to figure out how we're going to handle that.
So we do have a lot, though, but there are some we don't have anything, so that, those would be the ones that you guys need to discuss in the PRC. Am I correct?
I will point out, too, a lot of what we have is also in regulation, which is not necess, generally not what the PRC is looking at.
Right.
Now, if you want to direct us to, PRC to go ahead and look at this regulation, we would, but most of the stuff was put in regulation because it's very specifically implementing how you do something.
I get that, yes. We, I mean, Policy Review will accept policies, not regulations, but that's my suggestion. I don't know if everybody agrees with that. Dr. Robertson is raising his hand, so anyway.
I would appreciate that. I will tell you that the conversation we're having tonight is a captain across Commonwealth. I participated in a webinar last week with, all the state superintendents were invited to. It was, a brief was given by the attorney representing the Superintendent's Association, and this, the attorney directed boards, superintendents to engage with their legal attorney, get some direction, and work through policy to, to determine what the divisions were going to do. The expectation was, the model policies have been, have been provided. Expectation is you're going to implement them in some fashion. That was the message we got out of that, that particular call. How you implement those is going to really be the local board decision. So, yes, I struggled a bit with a model policies released on the 18th, effective on the 19th. I would never do that to anyone, but we'll work through it. And, and again, we just need direction. We have been having lots of conversations behind the scenes, but I, I don't want to have any false starts. So the sooner you, this board can say, "Hey, go forth and we'll get it done."
Okay, so what I'm asking is that the Policy Review Committee, and I know Mrs. Lynetti sends out the agenda for everyone, amends their agenda. Either you can do this before Thursday, or on Thursday, that's up to y'all. But I think everybody, I see everybody that's kind of is agreeing that it should be discussed, and we were just told by our superintendent, it needs to be discussed now.
All right, my suggestion would be we take it, the PRC, what we can bring between now and then we will. I will say some of these policies we do have, because they're human resource-based, they do have to be amended, so we're not going to be able to do all of it. And I think the PRC then can decide, because the PRC could hold another meeting, a special meeting if they need to. I don't think you're going to get through all of it because you're going to have to have discussions, and we may have to go back and rewrite it. We can bring what we think we have available and then point, have those discussions. Some of it may end up having to go into closed session if I think there's a potential for liability, but it really just depends on where we go with that. I think PRC can start the conversation. I think we can bring those policies and regulations that we think are close on there. Again, some of them I think are fine, so I don't think you have to do anything. So we can then have a discussion. If we can't get it done on Thursday, then PRC could decide about having another meeting when they want to do that. It doesn't necessarily have to be a month from now, so we can work through that piece of it.
Right, I agree, and I'm, my, my thought was not to just get it all done Thursday, I know that, but to get this started, you know, get the ball rolling, let's, let's get what we can to get started, okay? Ms. Brown?
Yeah, so I think, you know, in the spirit of consistency, I think that we should have the PRC discuss this, but I also think that we should continue to move this forward. That way, if it doesn't align with what Ms. Manning had intended, that she still has her resolution available, and she can always motion to remove that if it matches it closely. Thank you.
Ms. Manning?
Yeah, that was, I, I just wanted to clarify. So my resolution doesn't change any policies. It only addresses regulations. So I just want to clarify that this will still be on for action at the next meeting, and if there are any policies that need to be adjusted, then that's just a separate issue, correct?
Right, well, we will follow what we said we were going to follow.
Thank you.
And it was information this time, and the next time we'll bring it up for a vote. Yes.
Clarification real quick?
Okay.
What, what date are you planning to change? The August 21st to?
I would like to ask the, Dr. Robertson, what he thinks would be, if we approve this on August 22nd, what would be a good date to make this effective?
I'd be better, in a better position to answer it after the PRC discussion on Thursday.
Okay, so if it's okay, I'll just, before the meeting, I'll, before it gets put on the agenda packet, I'll change the date in consultation with Dr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Okay, and then also, as Ms. Lynetti said, and you guys will decide on the PRC, if you feel like you need to, to meet again before, a, a second time, because it happens. So are we all in agreement that that would work? Okay. Okay, thank you. So let's, let's move on. Anybody else? So we are back to our speakers, returning to our speaker list, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, our next speakers will be Alexa Hernandez, Alex Astrott, and then Catherine Cutchins.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board. My name is Alexia Hernandez. I'm a recent graduate of First Colonial High School, and I am here once again to urge the board to oppose the model policies and reject Ms. Manning's resolution. I am currently six days out from my college move-in date. My room is a mess, and I'm barely packed, but I am yet again here with my friends to speak on behalf of trans students and to defend their rights. My friends might come to speak to you on statistics and heartbreaking testimonials. Their speeches are highly coordinated to convey the most powerful message to you. In addition, my speeches, unlike some adults in the audience, aren't written by political groups or filled with dog whistles to scare other parents. My speeches are full of just my opinions. And one of these opinions is that I'm, would really hope that the board would stop listening to other speakers when they try to talk to, talk to you guys about how me and my friends are sick, or we're spreading a social contagion, or how they would like to put God back in education, and I'm really tired of people using these meetings to preach Christianity at us. They keep saying not to push our lifestyle on them, however, they have no problem pushing their religion onto us. And they say, "We, and the board alike," quote from another speaker this evening, "has no respect for the way the system works, but they seem to love to ignore the First Amendment freedom of religion." They constantly invoke the name of science and then use justification of religion in the same sentence. And I have said this time and time again, many of these parents' rights advocates in the audience are not currently parents, and they're not advocating for their kids, they're advocating to co-parent yours. I'd also like to say that I've heard a lot of talk tonight about a lack of moral code among me and my peers. My single teen mother instilled a strong moral code into me, to never judge others and to be respectful to all humans. I have never wanted to keep a secret from my mom, not once ever in my life, because I know that she would love me regardless of what I told her. And if you believe that your kids would like to hide things from you and use their schools or their teachers to do it, ask yourself why they feel the need to hide things from you in the first place. So even if you guys hate us and you think that we're sick, you think that we're unnatural in the eyes of your God, I hold the conviction that everybody is worthy of love. And I just want the board to recognize that the Virginia Human Rights Act protects us, so...
Thirty seconds.
Any, any decision you guys make, I hope that you guys comply with that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Astrott, then Catherine Cutchins, then Ashley Baranu.
Hello. I'd like to first begin by addressing something Mr. Simpson said earlier this meeting. He mentioned how anti-parents rights students go first. However, I'd like to clarify for everyone who may be confused by this statement, all students go to speak first at these meetings, not just people who go by a certain ideology. Then they do this in order to make sure that students don't speak at 2:00 a.m. on, on school nights to assure that we get proper sleep, although admittedly, I broke that condition myself now, I was here at 2:00 a.m. on the vote of Ms. Owens' resolution, but that's neither here nor there. But the only reason it is anti-parents rights students to start out most meetings is because there are no students who support this ideology in our school system. I've been here for every meeting over the last nine months, and I have yet to see one VP CPS student who advocates for these model policies. I'd also like to say that these policies are not supported nor applicable in the real world. They are merely a parents' rights dog whistle. Are we going to fire teachers for calling students by the preferred names? Are we going to waste the time of our administration officials and send them into classrooms as model policies enforcers? This isn't practical, it's posturing. A speaker also said, "We're advocating for more government control." But the reality is, we're just trying to get the government out of the classroom. They're the ones trying to tell students what their names are and what to be called. One speaker also mentioned that transgender ideology and how wrong it is, which ideology, and asking which ideology we are following. The ideology we are following is one where we treat our fellow students with respect and don't call them plagues. And contrary to what one speaker also said, there hasn't been a testimony of students who've suffered under the Northam policies. There was one speaker from California against dozens of VP CPS students unanimously against Yonkers disrespectful and transphobic model policies. We are advocate, we are not advocating for allowing teachers to lie to parents either. We are advocating for them to be able to do their jobs and teach instead of having to turn into child psychologists outing their own students because of the state's fear of having transgender students in their classes. outing their own students because of the state's fear of having transgender students in their classes. I love how speakers accept, have accepted that there would just be abuse by parents and that because that's not the majority of parents, because the majority of parents would accept this, that all of a sudden we should accept this abuse that would occur under these model policies. If there are a handful of students that would be harmed by a policy, I think we should not enforce that policy. We should take a strong look at it and we should not dismiss those students. And finally, about the legality aspect, I take a similar approach. If there is even a question over whether these policies are legally discriminatory, why would we even consider passing that on our schools? If we want to stand against discrimination, we will not support these model policies. Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Cutchins, then Ashley Baranu, then Teresa Langle.
Good evening. Thank you for serving on the school board. My assumption is that each of you are here because you want to do what's best for our community, for the teachers, for students, and for parents. I'm here tonight to advocate that you adopt the new Department of Education 2023 model policies. Your own policy states that the school board will direct the superintendent or designee to develop regulations, practices, and trainings related to compliance with Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3. So I'm asking you to follow your own policy. I'm in agreement with Mrs. Manning's resolution. Let's protect every student and respect parents for the huge responsibility that is theirs to steward in raising their child. It's hard for me to believe that any of you who are parents would not be furious if you found out that anyone was keeping a secret from you about your child, especially something as important as transgender. Think about that. Think about the safety and privacy of all the kids in segregated areas such as bathrooms. Think about what a serious matter this is and that these students are at the maximum 18 years old. When I was 18, I thought I knew a lot too, and I made some decisions that turned out very differently than I thought they would. I'm sure these students are struggling, but let's keep parents informed and involved. If homes are actually abusive, there are remedies for that. But disagreeing with your child, especially your teenager, isn't abuse, is part of being a parent. I'm asking that you adopt and implement the new 2023 model policies and keep parents informed and involved. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley Baranu, then Teresa Langle.
I stand before you as a concerned parent deeply invested in the educational journey of my twice exceptional rising second grader. I would like to address the unapproved admission process for ODS that my child and many others were subjected to this year. The proposed amendments by Dr. Kelly claim to legitimize what has been in common practice. I encourage you to further investigate this claim. Throughout the submission cycle, multiple administrators have presented information to this board. Regrettably, misinformation and partial truths have colored the narrative. It is crucial that we acknowledge the mistakes made by the administration in the ODS selection process this year. I attended the gifted CAC meetings and they did not lend support to these amendments and had numerous questions, as many of you do. The essence of my concern is that these amendments failed to resonate with the unique needs of students who were overlooked in the selection process. This deviation from the local plan, coupled with a random selection approach, led to a glaring absence of accountability. Most especially, the futile appeals process acknowledged by Dr. Rogers at the June 27th meeting and the unsettling occurrence of a lottery for all seats in the second grade classes. As a community, we have consistently sought accountability from both this board and school administrators, yet our questions have remained unanswered. It is evident that the amendments currently on the table do not address the real issues underlying gifted education. It is disheartening to note that the changes in the selection committee failed to yield a more diverse student population at ODS, including students who are twice exceptional. Experts in the realm of gifted education, such as Dr. Plucker and Dr. Cross, have voiced their insights on how to foster diversity and inclusion in the selection process. Yet their recommendations are notably absent. This indicates that today's amendments are a self-serving hail mary for the administration and attempt to legitimize this year's unapproved process with no concern for students caught in this year's failed experiment. These amendments were rejected by the gifted CAC for their inability to address the fundamental issues of the selection process. Our children with their unique potential deserve an educational environment that can challenge and nurture them intellectually. The experimental admissions process this year leaves us concerned about the path ahead. I am imploring this board to steer the course toward constructive changes. We must amend the local plan to tackle the real issues within gifted education. An overhaul of the admission process is imperative, identifying top applicants safeguarding the rights of twice exceptional students conspicuously absent from Dr. Kelly's plan. This should be paramount in considerations. Let us work together and ensure the rights of every student finding a place in the school environment that meets their distinct needs and their legal right to a fair and appropriate education, not forgetting the students impacted for this coming school year.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Teresa Langle.
Hi, it's always interesting, I come here at the end and you actually answered quite a few questions. I'm Teresa Langle, as you know, and I'm here to ask the Board of Virginia Beach to vote yes to Yonkin's model policies concerning transgender accommodations in our restrooms, remind the board of the importance of getting rid of pornography in our school libraries, and to demand more organized meetings that sadly have plagued this board and wasted hours of time, beginning with the resignation of the chair. Just a note to consider, there are approximately 64,000 students in the city of Virginia Beach, of which about 30 or 40 students have continually been here to speak over this past year on behalf of the LGBTQ, LGBTQ movement and their peers. Kim Melnick, in so many words, so many, a couple of years ago, at a meeting stated that there were hundreds, while there were hundreds speaking and rallying outside during COVID for two years to have the children back in school and then to remove masks, that the school board had to consider the majority and many that were not here to speak. So I'm here, as many students said they were, and you know I talk to a lot of people, to speak for myself and many parents that cannot be here, either because they cannot be or because they do fear intimidation for their views, being called haters and things like that from fellow employees and even employees, employers themselves, to ask the school board to support the model policies put forward by Governor Yonkin, as the chair stated they would do in a prior meeting. I'm speaking for them as well. It is feared that young women will lose the rights of much-needed privacy if transgenders are allowed in the girls' bathrooms, AKA young men in the girls' bathroom. And you have addressed that of having separate bathrooms, and I think it would be good with the small percentage there are, that if you are a boy and you are a transgender, you go into, you ask to use a single bathroom. And that all scholarships will be lost to women, that's a fear amongst the women, that they would be lost to young men who are competing with them, especially in high school where it's so important. And yes, secondly, I'm going back to the books and will only, that to show men giving oral sex to each other and any other form of sexuality is a graphic way such as showing, in a graphic way such as showing liquids flowing is child abuse in base. I would never do that as a teacher or a librarian. And speaking of the teachers, and I'm not going to finish this because it's, they've been addressed. They will be the ones that will be thrown under the bus when the court cases start, when parents sue because their children do pornography.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there was our last in-person speaker. We'll move on to our online speakers. Jerome Bell, please unmute.
Thank you. Parents of Virginia Beach school students, I'm actually here tonight to speak to you and not really to the school board. So unlike our past messages, I expect my message tonight to not fall on deaf ears. You may not like what I have to say, but sometimes the truth must be said in order to wake people up. Every parent here is responsible for the actions of this school board. Why? Because we come every meeting and yell and scream and beat our chest with anger and talk and make promises and threats that we're going to do something about their treasonous actions. Yes, the actions are worthy of prison. Why? Because they have violated their oath of office and committed the greatest crime against our children, violating our God-given rights and exploiting our children and family. So why is that, that we continue to allow it, allow this? Why? It is that you and I come every other week and participate in their satanic rituals of throwing our kids at their sacrifice altars of grooming and pedophilia and all in the name of fighting the good fight. Is it because we think we can't control, that we can win in their arena? Is it because we think we know better? Or is it because we think that if we just keep beating the same drum, that eventually the walls of Jericho will fall? Well, we are not Israel and this is not Jericho. If you are serious about removing the school board through lawful and permanent means, then please get in contact with me after this meeting. I will, I'm easy to find. If you are serious about winning this battle between good and evil, because it is a battle for the souls of our children and our families, then get in touch with me. We must take responsibility for how our reckless behavior has vilified and validated theirs. We must take responsibility for allowing the schools to get to this place. We must own our actions and correct them. If we do not, we will never win this war and certainly not the battle before us. I pray that we will do the right thing and come together using our First Amendment rights, which get trampled on here pretty much every other week, and the common law of the people to bring an end to this horrible plague that has left our children the bleeding victims. And however, because we are God-fearing people, we have God on our side. We can win this war, but we have to go about it a different way. And to all the other people that continue to speak here and, and speak tonight against these atrocities, we knew exactly what the school board was going to do when Chairman Riggs said that they would go with the model principles or, you know, Yonkin's decision. We all knew that they would never do that. We all knew that this is all a lie. They, all they do is lie, they pass this resolution to continue to groom our kids.
Speaker number two is not online, so our next online speaker will be Robert Bohan. Please unmute.
Good evening, school board. Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you, please continue.
Okay. All right, sorry. So we've heard a few times tonight about events from the last meeting involving two individuals. It seems that everyone speaking about this, especially the individual that was involved, missed a critical point. Who acted first? Was it the violent individual laying in wait to pounce and attack someone from a vulnerable group? Nope. It was a speaker that made the initial rude, unprovoked comment and then was shocked that someone would stand up to the defense of their loved one to unwanted aggression. Quite hypocritical to someone who was there doing the exact same thing, to stand up for someone they care for. Shame on them for trying to use this as a talking point to benefit their stance. Also contrary to what seems to be a popular belief of most speakers there, policies like the 2023 model policy are what Virginia Beach wants. And this was shown by the voters of Virginia Beach. Voters helped send Glenn Yonkin to Richmond as our governor. We also voted out and flipped seats on this very school board. So to say that Virginia Beach is not for policies like the 2023 model policy is incorrect. Fear mongering, nowhere in the policy, in the model policy states that the district will be quizzing each student about everything in their life. If something happens on school property, parents should be notified because parents are not on school property. Where does it say that it is the school's responsibility and that their job to extract information from students? Quit fear mongering and speculating, Ms. Martin. To think that those on our side are the ones that are considered conspiracy theorists. I think this is looking like a hard sale to you because all you're used to is keeping everything from parents. You hear that you have to keep parents informed, so you immediately interpret that as forcing teachers to hover and document every movement that a student makes, rather than what is more likely a reactive measure of events that actually happen. Parents are not in the schools, so obviously things that happen in schools or parents are out of the loop. And this policy is just returning to normal operation, including parents. This model policy is active. Mr. Robertson, that said the conversations are happening regarding how to implement this policy. So I hope to, I hope you stick to your aggressive timeline for getting everything passed and not hold up progress. And to those that, you know, are opposing this, it's really kind of hurtful to think that all they see, that the parents for, you know, anybody in this school district really are inept, dangerous, hateful, spiteful, bullies themselves, uncaring, bigoted, and an unending list of phobias or phobics. So I really hope you quickly pass Ms. Manning's resolution and implement all the elements of the model policy so that we can begin this next school year on a good foot and get back to, you know, doing what the school board is supposed to be doing. It's getting, getting all the, creating a good location and policies for.
And that is time. Madam Chair, there was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you. So this moves us to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. A, new courses. One, unmanned systems drones. Two, nail technician. Three, TV production, one and two. Four, introduction to landscaping, one and two. Five, building maintenance, one and two. Six, bus 240 business law, business 240 business law. Seven, business 224 business statistics. Eight, business 274 foundations of entrepreneurship. And nine, English as a foreign language. Four. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda? If so, identify any item that should be moved to the agenda, action agenda. I do not see anybody's hands. Hearing no call to move an item from the consent agenda, I call for a motion to approve all the items of the consent agenda as presented. I'll just ask for a motion. So moved and seconded by Mrs. Manning, moved by Mrs. Melnick? Who was it? Mrs. Brown and seconded by Mrs. Manning. And there, is there any conversation about that? Okay. Hearing none, call for a vote to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes, the motion did pass.
Thank you. That brings us to the action. A, personnel report, administrative appointments. I call for a motion to approve the August 8th, 2023 personnel report and administrative appointments. Moved by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the August 8th, 2023 personnel reports and administrative appointments. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes, the motion did pass.
And Dr. Robertson, are there any administrative appointments that you want to share?
Yes, there are, thank you, Madam Chair. First up is McKella Cardwell. She was currently an assistant principal at WT Cook and we're pleased that you've approved her recommendation to be the new principal at Windsor Wood Elementary School. And I would offer that her husband passed away yesterday morning. So if you could just keep her in your thoughts and prayers, I talked to her today and, yeah. So. Next up is Ramona Harps. Ramona currently was an administrative assistant at WT Cook Elementary School and I'm pleased that you've approved our recommendation that she'll be the next assistant principal at WT Cook Elementary School. Next up, Nicole Keros. Nicole is assistant principal currently at Point of View Elementary School and with the promotion of Dr. Wilkerson. We're pleased that you've approved our recommendation to be the new principal at Thalia Elementary School. We have Molly Lewis. She's currently an assistant principal at Windsor Oaks Elementary School and we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next principal of Windsor Oaks Elementary Schools. Dr. Archer has. Dr. Archer has still out on leave. Next up is Shalise Miller. She's currently an administrative assistant at Diamond Springs and Sea-Tac Elementary School, and we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next assistant principal at Creed's Elementary School. And next up is Angela Norrell, currently a madman assistant at College Park and Thalia Elementary School, and we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next assistant principal at Point of View Elementary School. And then finally, we just keep bringing them back. Yes, Gene Saltner is retired, so he thought. Yes, and so he has agreed to come back and assume the role of acting chief of staff beginning August 16th, as I transition into more of the role of acting superintendent. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Committee organization and board reports. Are there any school board members that have anything to report? As a reminder, this is a time for short reports, and school board members may file full reports with the clerk to be distributed to other school board members. I will mention what I did mention tonight during our meal for Sister Cities, because I was supposed to be going on a trip to Germany with Sister Cities as the, and also as the school board chair, to visit with the Hampton Roads Alliance, which was made up of all of our mayors in this Hampton Roads area, several of our community college presidents such as TCC, and several other leaders in economic development. And I was going to, we were all going to visit what they do in Germany with the students, how the students work with their, you know, forwarding their academics and helping them become workforce development ready. I did not make it because of airport problems, airline problems on the 14th. Yeah, sure, fine. On the 14th of July, I was supposed to leave and it was not meant to be, because there were two more days it would have taken to at least get out on Monday and I would have missed part of it. So I never did go. So I wanted everyone to know that, unfortunately. However, the person that got this whole thing going is the CEO here of IMS Gear, Dr. Weisenzil, and he has worked with us. He is also on our workforce development committee. And he is going to have an update, review, and get together with everyone that went, so I'll be able to hear that. So, anyway, wanted to let you guys know that. And Mr. Callen.
Yeah, along that same line, I attended the WHRO, I don't think that's the right name for the committee, but
It is.
It is.
That's how we know it.
Okay, that's how I know it as well. And that was held today from noon until 2:00, and it featured the showing of a movie called The Right to Read. And in it, it made reference to the NAEP scores as a reference point, so it reestablished that thought process. But nonetheless, it was a very informative, insightful movie, and underscoring the importance of reading and coming up with the science of reading that continues to be more and more an item of discussion, which was taking place yesterday at one of the workshops that were at the convention center. So nonetheless, a very informative and enjoyable meeting, and that's my contribution to the cause.
Let me add that, because I just remembered when you said that. Two of us, Mike Hallen and I, both attended the Department of Teaching and Learning Summer Conference that was at the convention center yesterday and today too, right? Just yesterday. Okay. It was excellent. I think it was well-attended and hopefully, this is the first time they've done this. And there were lots of great sessions, in session, there was a great keynote speaker. And this is where Dr. Robertson got to formally introduce himself and his plan to the people that attended, which was great. So it was, it was a great time and to be able to talk to the teachers and principals, teachers and principals were there, and were there others, other staff members too. So hopefully, you know, we'll get some feedback on that, but it was, it was very well done and very well attended. And hopefully, if we continue with it, it will be, you know, even more, more people next year. So it was great. Yes, Ms. Miller?
We have a governance committee meeting Wednesday at 1:00 and an audit committee meeting Thursday at 1:00.
And the PRC is
Thursday at 11:00.
No, governance is at 1:00. Because we made that, governance is at 1:00 because that was decided several meetings ago, and the audit is at 11:00.
Audit is Thursday at 1:00.
That's right.
PRC at 11:00.
PRC is 11:00, audit is, yeah. Because I'm going to all three of them, so I'm just trying to get them all together. But anyway, it has been posted, Mrs. Toni Otto has posted those and where they will be, will be held. Mrs. Brown?
I don't know if this is the right time, but I also just wanted to put another plug in for the back-to-school care fair on August 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Virginia Beach Convention Center. For the first 2,000 students, they're going to be giving away door prizes, free backpacks, haircuts, vision screenings, school entry physicals, vaccinations for 7th and 12th graders, and posture screenings, supports, physicals are not offered, but there is also some transportation available. So I believe that's probably on our main website, if people go to that. So if that's something you're interested in, make sure you check it out.
Great reminder. That reminds me of a couple of other things. Monday is the new teacher orientation, their first day back. It will be at Salem High School, and we've all been invited, if you would like to come. It starts at 9:00, right, Dr. Robertson? And so to see all those new bright shiny faces is really great to see that. So if you haven't been before and you have a minute, you just, you don't have to stay for the whole time, but just get to come by. If you want to stay for, at least for lunch, you can go, you can have lunch. Dr. Robertson, you want to add?
When you're finished with that, I will share something with you, to send us out on some good news as well.
Okay, great. And also, we just got this information again through Ms. Toni Otto, and I think it was sent out earlier from Ms. Ogden about attending the graduation for summer school, which is going to be on the 23rd at the convention center. That will probably be maybe about an hour, usually that is, it's not as long as some of the other ones. So please let her know ahead of time if you are going to attend.
Somebody else we were supposed to let know, because they have to get our gowns available.
It's Ms. Ogden. Yeah. Yeah, you have to let her know. It's, it's on your email, so.
If, if they do send it to me, I will just forward it to Ms. Ogden, so that would be fine.
Okay. So, Dr. Robertson?
Just real quick, Monday, I'm not going to spoil the surprise for you, I'll let you sit in anticipation for a few days, but we got our state scores as for SOLs as they compare to everybody else, and we crushed the state again. I mean, crushed. So, yep, good stuff coming. And, yep. The entirety of the state, double-digit higher, double digits higher than the state in a number of assessments. Yep, so.
Okay, so we do not have any more closed session, you guys, so I call this meeting adjourned.
Same time, everybody.